Welcome to the Town of Situets Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, August 21st, 2018, and at this time, I'd like to call this meeting to order. The first item that we have is an acceptance of our agenda, and I would accept a motion.
Motion to move to the agenda?
A motion by Ms. Cantfield, seconded by Ms. Curran. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Good evening. Let's move right on. We'll go to Watkins. Are there any Watkins this evening? Saying none, that's fine. I just want to at least let everybody understand, we're having the meeting here at the library, Town Library, tonight because, one was there was, it's a meeting room that's queued for the public to be able to use for public meetings. Second, there were some issues at one point during the, I guess you could say, not so much the construction, but afterwards, there was a noise issue. And so the board decided to have a meeting here to test the room and the noise level to see if there's any of the noise coming from one of the condensers. At this point, I don't hear it, so I think that's successful, that's a good thing. So that's the reason why we're having the meeting here tonight. Second thing is, I just want to at least let people know, this is live through the SCTV Facebook page, Situit Community Television, that's SCTV, not the, that has to be misconstrued with the 70's comedy show or comedy out of Chicago. So I just want to make sure that people understand that. It is not live by our cable, but it will be put up on cable afterwards, but it is live. So all our, I think it's fair, Seth, all our meetings at Town Hall are live both cable and live by SCTV.
It is live on cable.
So we got folks, so anyway. All right, that being said, I'm going to turn over now to our Town Administrator, Jim Pudoe. Pudoe, who will tell us what's...
Public to the board real quick. Just, we had a meeting last week on water, just don't really know where we are. We've got several meetings with Ty and Bond since last week's meeting to kind of map out where we're going, what we're doing. Right now, we're waiting for a document for them to prepare bid documents for the ice picking. We have $80,000 to Ty and Bond ice picking right now in our budgets, we're going to get started on that. We will be looking to appropriate additional money at the fall town meeting to continue that, but we're going to get started with what we have, whatever they have today. We got a call to go back, we can make a couple tweaks, so we should have that out, ready to go, get that bid, and have some ice picking, some pipe cleaning done early in the fall, probably October, I think we talked about it, Kevin. But some of the places, we think we make the most bank for the budget. Followed by that, we'll be looking for some money to do a hydraulic analysis of the system. That will let us map out where to go next for ice picking, also let us plan on our flushing program, because we're looking for money for flushing to do a townwide flushing in the spring. So just on the groundwater issues, the water issues, right now at the town meeting, and this is preliminary, $200,000 for ice picking and pipe maintenance, $100,000 for the flushing program, $150,000 for the replacement of the sand filter at the treatment plant, so the water goes to a sand filter, a carbon filter. We replaced the carbon filter last year, we need to replace the sand filter. That will take place over the winter time, because we can't do it when the plant's operating. $75,000 for the hydraulic analysis, and then we were in discussion about, what was discussed in the meeting last night, some sort of point person, groundwater person, we're looking at that maybe as almost an assistant water superintendent, and that person will, for lack of a better way of putting it, be responsible for the distribution system, the pipes, the pipe and the groundwater. We're still talking about that, but that's kind of where we're in the ballpark on that. So that's, just in the one week with the water, and then again, in the spring, we'll come back, we'll do the pipe replacement over the summertime, we'll be back with additional articles for more larger capital in the spring after we do the hydraulic analysis. We'll also be doing a water study, a full complete water study, and that'll be paid for all of them in part with the $200,000 that we got from the Toll Brothers project. So we'll get going on that. Town meeting, we're going to open the water tonight. Right now, we'll do about 20 articles, give or take, depending on what we have. And I have a list that I can give to the board, we'll firm it up, but we'll wait to see what happens tonight. Next thing is, we continue to work with the school department, Mass DOT, on the crossing lights for Group 3A at the Town Hall. We tied up with Mass DOT for a while in design. I signed the contract or the agreement this week with Mass DOT for the maintenance of the lights, so I'm hoping that's a sign that Mass DOT is going to pop that out quickly. Once it gets out, we have to bid it out to install it. We'll also include a sidewalk where it crosses to the Town Hall to connect it to the middle school sidewalk, so the whole thing will be handicap accessible when you cross the street, because right now, you'll be crossing to that grass area in front of the Town Hall. Last thing, because now we have a big agenda, just for the board, for the record. I did pass my FAA test, so now I am a licensed pilot, drone pilot, but I did pass that, so if you see me flying a drone, I'm fully licensed tomorrow, covered by the insurance.
Thank you very much.
That's all you have for tonight?
Just a person. Seth, can you hear me? The mic dents, it's okay. So we only have two mics, so I just want to make sure, maybe you make sure that we can get the voices. Questions?
Just want, Jim, just, Jim, I wanted to make sure I know, after the meeting, all of us sent you our feedback?
Yep.
In terms of action items and just comment and stuff, what's the status of that?
I got the last of those, I think Monday. I sent them over to the chair, so I just have to sit down with John at some point and try to go through them and prioritize, and give the board a prioritized list of things that you could discuss.
Go ahead.
But I got the last of them yesterday.
Great. My intent was to pattern this meeting on September 4th, go over those items, and then have a discussion following with actions over our meeting last week with the board. Great.
I just want to say thank you to some of the, the water department was out the next day, some of those key residents. I drove by and saw them there at the water over Curtis Street. So I just want to thank them for acting immediately as soon as I came forward.
Actually, we had over 150 reports to the groundwater, 58. 158.
Yes.
Very few presented with a clean water. Anyone who left a message and asked for a call back has been called back within 24 hours.
Great.
And there were 91 individual responses with groundwater violations, you got to apologize to them. Why, like, they have the names of town halls, like, went back across, and they have to go. But they've been able to track those. Anybody with, please call me back within 24 hours, get a call back from the water department. So they've been hunting those down, and if we have a real bad problem, they call them back, and if they get out there right away, they get out there, I check it out. So they're really working on it.
Are most of those reports, either they can serve them with you, or is...
Absolutely, certainly. Very few through the, you want to make a line, mostly.
Great. Anyone else? All right. Well, let's see, let's move on. We're going to move on to our 7:15 discussion vote of outdoor entertainment permits, and the first one is 60 Old Open Bucket Road. Could you come on up, please? Thank you.
Here.
Yep, right there. So if you could just tell us your name?
Hi, my name's Karen Alstad.
And you're at 60...
60 Old Open Bucket.
Okay, and you're looking to have now to our entertainment license for September 2nd?
Yes.
It's a Sunday?
Yes.
From 6:30 PM until 10:30 PM?
Yes.
Looks like. You got a live band, and if I'm not mistaken, I think you've sent out notice to your neighbors.
I invited everyone who's in butter.
You did, you probably.
Most of them are coming.
Gotcha. Karen, are there any questions from the board?
No.
Entertain a motion, then.
Move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit to Karen Alstad of 60 Old Open Bucket Road for a private party on 9/2018 with live music by the Doc Ellis Band from 6:30 PM to 10:30 PM.
It's a motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by Mr. Harris. All those signify, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, and enjoy later.
Doc Ellis, thanks you too.
Moving on to 114 Man Hill Road. And you're looking for an outdoor entertainment license for August 25th, around 3:00 PM until 9:00 PM?
Correct. I'm Rich Westelman, I'm the owner of 114 Man Hill Road. It's going to be a party with our next door neighbors, the Lagontary is at 106.
Good. And the same question, I, have you given notice to your neighbors?
We have. We got the list of the butters, and handed out our invitations, and most of them are coming as well.
Good. Any questions from the board? Saying none, I take a motion.
Move to grant outdoor entertainment permit to Sharon Richard Westelman on 114 Man Hill Road for music gathering on August 25th, 192018 with live music from 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Motion. Motion by Ms. Cantfield, seconded by Mr. Harris. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
All the best. All right, now we're going to move on to 7:20, 7:15. It's probably Karen, so we'll hold off on the 7:20, we still have about seven minutes to go. So it's Karen, Joseph, or Brad? We move on to that item. So you have... Seaside at Situit Construction. Moving to a discussion vote, Seaside at Situit Construction Inspection Phase 1 Contract for $95,000.
So this is the Towns engineer that will oversee the Toll Brothers project. This money is from Toll Brothers. I believe the estimate from the engineer was about $88,000. My recommendation to Karen was to make sure you put a little bit extra in there, in case they dig a hole and find something, don't be expected. We didn't want to have to back money back to ask for parts for money. So the $95,000 is for Phase 1. They ran out of three bids, I think these are only, I'm just trying to bring up right now. Most of the questions was I responded, and they would be the Towns engineer for the Toll Brothers project.
And I forgot who it was, but somebody else did not respond, so that's...
Must have been Sam.
Sam's answering there. Questions from the board?
When will they start, Jim?
Well, they won't start until all the prerequisites are met, so right now, there is a pre-construction meeting scheduled for next week. Construction cannot start until at least three weeks after the pre-construction meeting, and they are waiting on the bond at this point. So until all the prerequisites are met, they can't stop. Pre-construction meeting next week is the big, can't stop the clock ticking until when they can stop.
Good.
As we work with this firm before?
Yes.
And good results with them?
Yeah, they did all the preliminary work, we've been doing the plans and stuff for the planning wood, so they're familiar with the project. Post-it wins, they're a good group, they're out long.
Okay. Wait on it. When do they stop? When does their product, when does their contract end? And again, can you...
Do you have the, the scope of services, Sean, if I wasn't?
I just, yeah, all right.
It's Phase 1 of the, but it's Phase 1 of the project, probably, yeah.
Yeah, I think they'd said 30 months. Yeah, that's what, I had a question.
No, that's good.
Karen, go ahead.
When it says Phase 1, that it's like a 30-month construction, I could, I just didn't understand what Phase 2 would be, is it the houses, or...
No, it's, the project isn't two phases, it's kind of a front phase and a back.
Okay, so that's, and I just have a couple of questions, which, you know, these might be working around, so if you don't know, we can...
Can make it up.
Give it, no, you will give us... In their oversight, there was no provision, they said there's no gas lines installed into the project, and I just was wondering about, you know, if these people might figure out that there might be generators down the road? So, I don't know, that's a follow-up question for Karen, just to say...
Yeah, I mean, that would be the desire of the project, as opposed to...
And there was also no, in this contract, there's no environmental remediation oversight, that's a separate contract?
Separate contract.
Okay, thank you.
Separate contract.
That's it.
Anyone else? All right, in that case, then entertain a motion if somebody wants to make a motion.
Mm-hmm. Did you...
Yeah.
Move to award and sign a contract for construction inspection Phase 1, Planning Board Special Permit, Storm Order Permit, and Conservation Commission Order of Conditions for the Seaside at Situit to Horst Witten Group Incorporated for the amount not to exceed $95,000.
Motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by Mr. Vignani. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous. So, let's see if we can get something else out. How about, is Sam's, Sam's on the harbor? Come on up, get good, have a seat. This is a 7:40 discussion vote, Common Vicular for Transfer of Business, Sam's on the harbor. Are you Michael?
I am, I'm Mike Tibode, I live at 40 Brook Street, the restaurant's at 146 Front Street.
Nice commute.
Yeah, it's a dream commute, something I've dreamed about for a long time.
So you're taking, I assume then you're purchasing the company?
That's correct. Yeah, for you. Buying the restaurant from Sam, and really looking forward to taking the wheels.
You've got a great, a great restaurant there.
Looking forward to it.
Questions from the board?
Any changes to the menu, or...
Other than tightening it up, for the next six months, it's pretty much going to stay business as usual, as I get a hold of the whole thing, and then we'll see what we can do to grow it. Make sure, add what people want, remove what people don't, and, you know, keep it as the working man's food, working woman's food, you know?
Work with persons?
Yes.
It's a great spot, so congratulations.
Thanks.
What's your experience?
I work here in Situit, doing breakfast, lunch, and dinner at, well, scrubbing dishes at the Milliworf is where I started, learning under Bill at the Dockside. I worked there for like three years, four years maybe. I worked over at what's now, well, the Dockside is now Riva. I worked at the Harborview for maybe five or so or more years, doing steaks and lobsters and casseroles, before that turned into T-K's. Worked up in, on 3A at Bergson's for Marco, so that's your corporate food, and worked at Camp Swanto for the Boy Scouts, serving the seating of 300 family style, three times a day for eight weeks, and that was some pretty neat, high-volume stuff. For a while, I've been doing technology, and I'm just done with the computers, go back to the culinary arts.
Good for you. Right? Sean, Karen?
I mean, they ask the questions I thought to ask, a menu and the hours and such, it's an asset to the community, and I hope it continues.
That's cool.
I have to ask you, turn to the table.
Not today.
Okay. Motion, then?
Approve a Common Vicular's license for new owner, wife and kid...
Tibode, Tibode.
Tibode.
Yep.
Of Mike Seigler, Albert H, doing business at Sam's on the Harbor, located at 146 Front Street, Seigler Bass on 1066, pending for a health approval.
Motion by Mr. Harris, seconded by Ms. Curran. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mike, congratulations.
Thank you.
For your success and continued, all right? Thank you very much. We're going to go back to the 7:20 public hearing and discussion vote, transfer of license for a package store wine and malt beverage off-premises annual license concerning 7-Eleven. Now, is the attorney, is it Iada?
Yep.
John Iada.
John, good to see you. And with you is...
This is Mary Ellen Hayden, she's the proposed manager of record. So, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and this statement for John Iada, the director of the Miller, 28th Street, Boston. This is Mary Ellen Hayden, who has been involved at this location for the last several months, but been involved with Tedeschi's and 7-Eleven for close to 20 years. Also in attendance for, and on behalf of 7-Eleven, is the founder and sufferer of this location, is Roche Clocher, as well as the director of abuse operations, Kevin, who's on the front of our, welcome, folks. This is a transfer, the corporate entity 7-Eleven is purchasing this license from the former franchisee, and this is going to be a store that's going to be operated by 7-Eleven Massachusetts Inc., which is their corporate entity. The franchise agreement ended a couple months ago with that franchisee, and they've taken over the operation of the store since that time. There's no, currently no sales of the beer and wine until this license has been approved by your, this board and the ADCC. The former franchisee, as we've been with, and Mary Ellen's really with, had some issues, concerns with their security, whether it's the staff or the use or non-use of scanners. That's why Mary Ellen was brought in, and also 7-Eleven is taking over as well, because it's important to them that this store is operated a certain way. Mary Ellen, as I stated before, has 20 years' experience. She started at Tedeschi's, when Tedeschi's was acquired by 7-Eleven, she was folded into 7-Eleven. So she's been with 7-Eleven for about two years, three years?
Three.
Okay, and prior to that, almost 17 years with Tedeschi's, so all in all, 20 years with those two entities. And then prior to that, she worked at Booz Liquors in Rockland, where she started, got her experience specifically in the liquor industry. She is tip certified, all the staff is or will be by the time the product is on the shelf. I think there's three or four other staff members that have that certification. And the policy change we're looking to do is that every customer is going to be asked for an ID. In addition to that, they do have a POS system that is, does have a scanner that's integrated into that, so any product that would be brought up, it's not just punching in the data bar, they actually have to check the ID against what comes up in their scanner. So they feel that that's going to be an improvement on the prior operations. Again, they take it very seriously, Mary Ellen was brought in for that purpose, and she's got around a tight ship, so we hope that this transition's pretty seamless, you're not going to see any changes to the hours of operation, or the actual daily operations, it's just, it's new ownership, but it's still set all up in the store.
Just a few, so, I think, you know, so it's the corporation that's owning, 7-Eleven's going to be owning the store?
It's not going to be a franchise, no question.
Okay. Is there a number that they're allowed to have?
There is, there's seven stores within the state.
Okay. And so this will be seven?
This will be seven, we're making sure that once everything's approved, they're out there, well, beyond the max, then I'll roll it.
Okay. And the other question I have was, you said POS, so I'm not sure what the POS is, but...
So the point of sale, so anytime, any product is brought up to the counter, a lot of times, they would have any stores, they might have tobacco products, some have it with alcohol products, and before, it would just be check an ID and enter a validated bar.
Right.
It goes a little bit further, and that actually scans the ID, so they're trying to stay on top of the technology and really improving on that.
Okay. And the reason why I ask that is because, obviously, the history of this location has had some violations in the past, and I believe, I forgot, we did give them probation, or we ended up taking a day or something. So I guess my point is, from your folks' standpoint, you are buying a new store in my mind, but there's a history there, and obviously, and I appreciate the fact that you're going to be doing the scanner, that's one of the things that we found to be successful here in the town, but to be vigilant and lose a sales worth it than losing a day's sale of business. And I say that because, from my vantage point, there's a history there, we need to eradicate that going forward, and I hope that your folks will do just that.
Excuse me, I've already put that in through cigarettes. Okay, you have to show an ID and scan.
Good.
I don't care how old they are.
Good.
And I have lost sales, but that's not my problem.
I just, I appreciate that, and I only ask that because I know that was the one issue that I had. I'm not sure what the rest of my work, but I just wanted to make sure you, questions from the board? Karen?
Just one question probably for Jim. The outstanding violations against the former owner, do they track, will they transfer as well, because we have a rolling policy of strikes against, is it, the slate starts clean?
It's not clean.
The state considers that the same way as well, if there's a new operator.
New license.
Again, as the chairman stated, it's something to, you know, they're aware of the past history here, but it doesn't necessarily carry over to punish the new operator.
No, you would ask a question, I was just curious, just, no, how many stores that you own have license, and I know one at the end of Grove Street, I don't think that...
So, yeah, a lot of the stores, like, obviously, you can imagine that there are, you know, scores and scores of 7-Elevens, but those that would hold the license would most likely be a franchisee. There's no others in town that are owned by this entity, 7-Eleven.
I'm sure they're going to do the right things. And you answered your own question, it's, you know, you can have state-of-the-art electronics there, and if you don't ask for the ID, then what goes, it sounds like you're, you're doing that.
I would bet that took place probably about two or three weeks ago, but everybody had to be at the, the cigarettes.
Tony?
Yeah, could you just explain how that works? So if somebody's going to scan in a bottle of wine or something, and then you can't complete the sale without scanning, so it's...
You can't complete the sale without putting in an ID, literally scan the barcode on the back of your license.
So if you don't have a scan, you don't, you don't get the sale?
If you don't have, if you don't have an ID.
So if you're in South Carolina, and it doesn't scan that, that's your license, it won't take. Okay. And it, so it also looks for not only the age, but also whether it's a fake ID or not?
And the clerk is verifying what they see on the screen to what they actually see on the ID, so if it's different information, that clearly is this, it's a fraudulent ID or...
Great, that sounds like a good system. Who is the ultimate responsible party? So if we do have an issue, and we do have to, you know, talk to somebody, who, but what's the, what's the chain of...
Well, Mary Ellen's the manager.
I would be the manager, so I would be the one that would be spoken to.
Okay, so any, any situation, great, and then you report up to...
My boss.
Some of the people behind you, who are, great. Great.
No, no questions, I'll ask you.
Be anxious or, I certainly would like to see the system once it's in, because I think, I don't think we have that in any of our stores in town.
Coming tomorrow.
We have the scanner.
I have the scanners tomorrow, they're already replaced.
Be able to have that as a point of sale, be able to eliminate if it doesn't work, is actually a nice threshold for people to...
How will we get tomorrow?
Oh, good. I'll stop by.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Other than the fact that we take it very seriously, and...
So do I.
Yep, so, we're glad to see you're, you've got these systems in place.
Jim?
As a public hearing, you must be questioned, is any comments for guests from the audience?
Right, and that's it, are there any questions, I'm just looking at the audience. Are there any questions from the audience?
Is this the same system, a similar system as used at the supermarket for scanning IDs, validating those?
Does it? It sounds familiar, it sounds to me, the diff, I'm not sure if the, the market has a...
But it's not tied in with the sale there, they actually enter it after they're, says what, this is actually validating the ID?
Yes.
If you, just your name and address also.
I'm sorry, Mike Tibode, 40 Brook Street, Situit.
So I think from the sound of it, when they scan it in, it stops the process for purchasing, then they have to take the, their card, scan the card, if the card is not legit or if there's a malfunction, they don't get the sale.
It's not, this is not requiring the judgment of the human doing this, operating the scanner, is it, whether it's embedded, the system...
It's my full license.
The system itself is validating, yeah.
That's great.
I, I think this is the first I've heard of it in our town, and I'm like, that's, you're setting me at the gold standard, so to speak.
The operator needs to validate what's in his hand, what's on the screen.
Correct.
So that's the operator's job, he scans it, something a little apart on the screen, he has to make sure the two will match.
So it's like a final approval, is it, yes, I see.
So it has an picture or something else on it.
Thank you.
Well, the ID is the person standing in front of them.
That's correct.
That's, that's, I mean, it's got to match, because it's in the system, you know, I can tell John's ID, you know, someone...
All right, any other questions? Saying none, entertain a motion? Close the hearing? Want to close the hearing? No? No. Better close it.
Moved out the board of selectmen to approve a transfer of license for a packaged store of wine and while average off-premise annual license held by JVNJ Foods Incorporated, doing business as 7-Eleven, to 7-Eleven Massachusetts Incorporated. The 2,920 square foot space is located at 337 Gannett Road, Situate, Massachusetts, and consists of 2,920 indoor area total square footage, one room with one entrance and two exits.
Motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by.
Second.
Mr. Harris, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, now we're going to move on for a discussion vote, special event permits, and in particular looking for the first one, which is Go For Life Family Fun Walk at the Situate Harbor Community Building. And Director of Council on Aging, Hayes, good evening. So what is this all about? What do you got going here?
So we're having a walk. Very excited about the idea. The Mass Council on Aging had offered to grant funding for up to 40 communities towns to do, maybe start an annual event walk for several reasons, but especially to encourage, well, to celebrate, I guess, it's community celebration of walking, but to do it as a community, to do it with all the generations, if you could. So to encourage older adults who are currently walking and just to applaud their improvements and give them more opportunity to do that, but also to help them invite family friends. And then really to make it for us just an opportunity to be with community for gathering, for celebrating, really was a little bit multiple reasons for doing it. We have a new walking group, we've done it a few times. We have a trail walking group that's fairly regular, and we actually just were able to purchase the grant from the Situate Education Foundation, a set of 10 sets of Nordic walking poles, which Lisa Thornton, our activities coordinator, was instructed and is now helping instruct others to use them. So it's a workout. So it really was sort of an opportunity to highlight some of that and encourage that to continue among our population. But it's an accessible fitness option for all generations, and it's really a chance to kind of highlight and celebrate what seniors and the senior center is doing, showcase the walkability of our town in particular. So it was an easy route to determine. Actually, I had communicated with the chief of police just to see what he thought about it, and the first suggestion he had was for me to check the Patriot Schedule, which I hadn't thought of myself, so that was really good. So in determining the date, it's one that they have a date at night. But still, we really were just trying to find the right time for it as well, so after services in the morning, but before other afternoon, afternoon activities. So we finally determined at 11:00 a.m. So 11:00 a.m., we're also having, it was an opportunity for the Council on Aging, which is announcing and initiating this new age-friendly movement here in town. So we're accepted into this network of age-friendly communities through AARP and the World Health Organization. So that's brand new. Town administrator has been, talked about it with him, and so we were accepted, and now we needed something to help us kick it off and announce it to the community. So this really worked for doing that as well. So we're excited about that. So there'll be a representative from AARP, and we may need some sort of town official to join us and sort of help celebrate and help accept the official certification from them for moving into this new phase.
So where are you walking? Where is this?
So the route is, there's a one mile and a two mile route. We just decided that was nice. So from the Harbor Community Building, it's actually perfect to what I was calling the Sands Hills Rotary, not being from Situate personally, but the sign. And then two miles is exactly to the lighthouse and back. So if they're just able, or interested in doing the one mile option, it's really just around that and right back to the center, and then we're building. And then two miles is the lighthouse and back. So we'll have music, some games, a couple of other things planned to treat, refreshments. So we'll have a little bit of a party back there, so we have until 1:00 p.m.
One thing you might want to be aware of when you, when you say you're going from the community center down to the end of Jericho, and then back, that's the one mile, but the two mile move, because there's no sidewalks, you might want DPW to make sure that they have signage, maybe no parking on one side if you're going to have people walking around there.
I will. We did, me and, I did check, and Sergeant Gil Martin met with us the first time, and he gave us some tips, and actually, it was recommended that we use that kind of a route. I mean, it wasn't through the downtown, where we might have needed more detail. It does have some sidewalks, and then he just felt that it was friendly enough through the loop that staying on the sides. But there'll be instructions given during the announcements before, before they step off. So step off time is 11:30 in the morning, but we're gathering at 10:30. We're going to have the presentation and announcements at 11:00.
And then what, 11:00, 1:30, AM TV at the community center for football? Do people watch Patriots?
Well, they'll have to watch the Patriots on until the evening.
Oh, that's good.
They can watch the other teams, but that's why, it was a good day. So it's, I'm sorry, September 23rd is the date for this. So it's a Sunday.
Questions?
Rain or shine?
Rain or shine, yep, rain or shine, I'm afraid. I think that's the way it should be.
Any questions from the board? Enter, entertain a motion.
Moved to approve a special event permit to let the Davis Town Situate Council on Aging, Go For Life Family Fun Walk, September 23rd, 2018, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m.
Motion by Ms. Hamfield, seconded by Ms. Curran. 1:30 is enough, a good time for you to finish?
Well, we had to. The recreation department is using the building at 2:00, so we had to shift our time a little bit to something in the morning, so we're setting up a little, it's a window. We can do that.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Want to congratulate?
Thank you very much.
When you need somebody from the board, I'm sure, I'd be happy to.
Great. John will run it. Or you could, you could do that.
I can't, I'm on my knee right now.
Maybe next year, will it speed into the run?
A walk is good.
All invited. Thank you.
Jim?
Look, if I could, I want to go back to the seaside, was it, when we counted, asked the question? The remediation actually is part of this contract, the environmental, it's under number 38, and it says LSP, Licensed Site Protection.
Oh, okay, I thought it was.
So I'm backed with that, it's not a separate contract, it isn't this contract for all the environmental radiation, as opposed to a 12,000.
I thought it was included in the case schedule.
No, Ellen, or, it says LSP, instead of engineer. That's all Licensed Site Protection, that's all the environmental mediation.
Okay, great.
All right, going to move on to the next one, Alice's House Fun Run, Hummer. Julie, come on up. Can you give your name and address?
Julie Johnson, 260 South River Street, Marshville.
And you're looking to have a fun run on October 20th, from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And is it, did I see five miles of that, or?
Four point five.
Four, four point five. And you're starting at the, you're starting at the parking lot of the town, or?
No, what we've done is, the Davis family owns the sand parking lot, the dirt parking lot, if I do anything, so we're going to do registration and set up there, and then have the town parking lot reserve that for parking. So we've got just parking, and then we'll take off. We're going to register in the dirt parking lot, come down, gather everybody at a start at the post office and the town parking lot, send them south down River Street, but we're down, up around the loop of Ocean Drive, come back, go past the intersection, Marshville Ave, and head up to the cliff, get up to Fort Mill, where the cliff will come back. But we'll have the finish line on the north side of that intersection, so they're not running through the intersection again. They'll end before it. That way, we're only pulling off traffic on the bridges coming into town for that. It's that, go up when they go at Julian Street, and then when that big, the front runners get past it, which should be about 10 minutes, and then when they pass through again at Marshville Ave. So they'll only hit the bridges once.
This is the first time, this looks like the first time.
For Alice's House, I organized it when it was back in 98, when we did the Portland Gale, under the anniversary of the Portland Gale. And we did it for about five or six years in a row, and then the braineurism group, Christine, I can't remember her last name, she ran it just more recently, I think from like 2010 to 14 or so. So she's done it more recently, and she's actually jumped on to help improve this one. So there's been a few going on from last. And I think we revived it in 98, we were told we were reviving something from the 1960s and 70s, so.
It keeps coming back?
Well, it's a natural path. It's a nice platform.
The road, Jim, do we know if Kavanaugh, if Kavanaugh's here, but Central's, that road, I don't know, after all the storms and throwing poles and every patches, can we hurt the runners?
You know, I drove it the other day again, and it's not too bad. They've really done a lot with all the plowing and regrating of each residence along the way. It's kind of refilled itself, but it's not paved or it's not repaved, so it's not fresh. Like a lot of people that bought it know it.
Okay. Questions from the board?
Could you, I obviously need for the backup, but could you tell us about Alice's House a little bit?
Oh, sure. Alice's House is one of the homes that burnt down in 2012, the four houses that burnt on that March day, when the wind carried the fire. It's, it was originally a home owned by Alice Feeny. She and her husband rented, not even rent, they owned it and lived in it, but they would rent it or actually just let people use it for kind of a respite purpose. They were involved in cancer support groups, AAA meetings, they would let them use their house. It just has a lot of good mojo in that house, because it's always been a healing place. So when it burnt down, Alice had passed on a few years before that, and Janet Gibson had purchased it as a foundation, and was able to run it so that in the summer, it gets rented at market price to the public. And then that money helps sustain it September through June. So if somebody needs the home to just have a place to go because they've got a family member struggling or struggling, we can let them stay there, and they can make a donation if they can afford it, and if they can't, they can still stay there.
Well, that's great.
So we were able to rebuild it after it burned down, only because we rebuilt the board of directors. I actually did the design for the new house and stayed on the board of directors, and now we're trying to just pay off those construction costs. So we're almost there.
That's great. Good cause.
It is a very good thing. Thank you. I don't know if you'd like it.
Motion?
That's amazing. I didn't, that's, just ask Karen, I've never heard of that.
Oh, it's Alice's House.
I blew over the radar on that.
Yeah. It's been there for a long, long time. I grew up in Hummer, and I knew it was there, but I'd never been there. And then when it burnt down, and I was asked to come and help with the redesign to rebuild, I got very interested and ended up joining the board. Yes, didn't any, the attorney, Jeff Lucy, is on the board with us. Everybody that got involved in the rebuild ended up staying on.
That's a, that's a great story. Thanks for asking. Are you just a sort of organization in Boston or something like that?
No, no, it's right here.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah, it's very good.
Motion?
Moved through a special event permit to Julie Johnson, Alice's House, for the, for the Alice's House Fun Run on October 20th, 2018, from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m.
Motion by Ms. Hamfield, seconded by Mr. Harris. All those in favor? Aye. Julie, congratulations.
Thank you, good luck.
Yes.
Next, going to move over to Stop Cancer Now, furiously Cliff Challenge. Thank you. Ladies, how are you?
Great, how are you?
So you've got to change your name, and I think I've gone mistaken, a change of start?
Start and finish, the route after, wait, is it okay? Do I go?
Actually, could you identify yourself for?
Sharon Tissany, 138 Vernon Road.
Ian Marie Winchester, 277 Toby Gardens Street. Ian Duxbury.
Yes.
After our meeting the last time, and thinking about the route, you had some concerns about the crossing of the Driftway.
Right.
And I actually started to think about that and walked the route, and we started doing some experimenting, and came up with a route that does not cross the Driftway and allows us more parking. Okay, so I went and had a meeting with Officer Gil Martin, and he was very, very, I guess, eager for me to look at that second route, because the first one would have been very costly. So he was, he said he was going to notify the, the selection, that he was in favor of the second route. So that would change the start and finish to Peggy Beach. He was not concerned about it being that it's a town beach with the beach stickers. He was okay with that being October 13.
Yeah, I was worried about that.
And as far as the name change, the Cliff Challenge was a race that was previously held, and I did reach out to those folks that did the race, and they asked me to not call it the Cliff Challenge. So in honor of that, our race was the Cliff Challenge.
I liked the new name.
Thank you.
I think that's, that's great, and it says what it.
It says what it is.
I got it.
Yep. So everything else, same.
Quick.
I have applications if you'd like them.
You know what, I will take one, assuming I can start walking if I, and they're jogging with me.
Well, you can walk it too.
I'm having problems right now. But I'm very happy that you did that, because obviously the details are expensive, and obviously it's not trying to generate as much money for your cause, and then some safety issues, so I'm glad you were able to do it.
And also, is there a way that the town administration fee for the detail can be waived since it's a.
I, I, that, we'd have to ask the board, we have, about waiving the administration fee. The difficulty we have is, we've only done that on like town events, like St. Patrick's Day Parade, we've done it for Harris Day, and I'm not sure what else we've done for Tommy, Sean, anybody else might remember, I'm not sure if it was for.
Cardinal.
The officials previously, but what's that, Tony?
Cardinal.
And that's only because it's for the whole town primarily. And if you were to do it for your event, I.
I understand. You can't, you can't, you can't get it unless you ask.
I, I respect. Thank you.
I'm trying to cut my overhead.
That's right. Sorry, the answer's short. But that being said, any questions from the board?
Do you want clarification with the route?
Um, my, just my, picture here isn't that clear. So the short route goes around Second Cliff, out to First Cliff, maybe?
Yes.
And then the longer one goes, takes a turn at the church at the.
At the Parrish Center.
Parrish Center, and goes down to where?
Gilson. And then goes up Gilson, and then down towards the golf course, so it doesn't go down Collier. It goes down towards the golf course, then to Kent Street, and then back on the Driftway back to Peggy.
Old Driftway.
Is anybody?
I thought it was down Crescent. It looks like it goes up Gilson, and then you probably come around.
Not Crescent, we call it Crescent.
And then Gilson, you have to come back down Driftway, and then you come old Kent Street.
Yes.
To connect with Kent Street. And then back up and back, it looks like. Great.
Julie, it's made out of a block off the street, how many runners do you rest around?
At this point, I would say that no, you're not going to need to do any road closure of any type. There's a pretty good wide shoulder on that side of the road. I would talk to the police ahead of time. Because the Driftway's a nice wide road, you won't even have to cross the runners at any point. If they take that first turn onto Gilson, by the time the lead runners are coming back down Kent and back onto the Driftway, everybody will be off. All of the outgoing runners will be off the main road. So you're still going to be, you know, we're probably going to be 100, maybe 150 runners within the first mile, they're going to be running some of five.
You might think about either, see if you either have more DPW cones or softers. Only because there is a reservation lane there for cycles, bike lane. On the outside is, you know, when bikers come, cycles come down, you might want to have that.
And that's one of the things, I'll talk to the police about ahead of time, I just love to check before I use any type of traffic cones.
Yep.
Also, Officer Gil Martin encouraged me, and I certainly will do this, to notify all of the folks along the route. And, I mean, I'll put something on social media, I'll put something in the paper, and I'll put a flyer in their mailbox, and to let them know that this is coming up, and encourage them to participate before they get their coffee.
Quick. Motion?
Moved to approve a special event permit to Sharon Tissany for the Stop Cancer Now Road Race on October 13th, 2018, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., pending receipt of certificate of liability insurance.
Motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by Mr. Vignani. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
I just want to reiterate, I think you really have to check with the police, because that could be dangerous with 150 runners on that.
Officer Gil Martin, he, he was okay with it. He was a little more concerned about the walkers than the runners, that the walkers will be going on the Driftway. And if there are walkers in the five, in the five mile, and I run and walk at the same time, he wasn't as concerned about that.
Yeah, we work pretty closely with them, so that if he wants, wherever he wants us to have volunteers to make sure that the runners are staying in that cone lane, and they'll allow us to do that. I own all the cones, so it's, it's not a matter of being able to get access to them. If they allow us to do that, we will have volunteers making sure that the runners are staying in there. And I agree that the walkers are more of a problem, because they go to get their coffee, And I agree that the walkers are more of a problem because they go to get their coffee, they walk for across the road, and don't really pay attention to what's going on as opposed to the runners just, once they start, they just, the faster you go, the quicker it's over, I guess. So.
Thanks.
It's just those walk, or cross walkers.
Ladies, thank you very much. That's it. And all the best.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now we're going to move on to a discussion vote, community choice aggregation. I see Lisa Scanlon here, Sustainable South Shore.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Lisa Scanlon, 15 Poplar Ave, Citu. And Lisa Gortola, 52 Allen Street. And thank you very much for inviting us back to revisit the conversation about community choice aggregation for Citu. We are looking to hopefully get this, the articles for the community choice aggregation on the special town meeting for the fall. If, if you don't mind, Lisa, we're just going to review just very briefly what community choice aggregation is.
So the Mass General laws allow communities in Massachusetts to go out to bid for their own power sourcing. And this allows the community to go out to bid at different times of the year that power companies are not allowed to go out to bid at. So that affords an oppor, that allows an opportunity to get the best rates, better rates even than the power distributors can do. So it's an opportunity that's out there for, for these communities and I think right now 16th in the country. Massachusetts being a lot of them. And many cities and towns have already taken advantage of this in Massachusetts, including the city of Boston, Rockland is next door, approximately 30 or so other cities and towns. So we're hoping that for the special town meeting, the enabling language, which allows the board of selectmen to at least move forward with the process and explore those opportunities for both financial reasons, which would provide our power in a competitive pricing way, give us the best price for the power, but also to maybe make room for some Class 1 renewables if, if we could make it affordable. So just, you know, pursuing that process, the enabling language would be the first article. And then there would be another article where we as, as the towns kind of renewable energy sustainability group would say, if there is room to put in more Class 1 renewable green power, certainly, I think this community has already been exemplary in terms of the municipal power with the turbine and the solar array. So it seems fitting to make it possible for residents to opt for more green options for residential businesses in the town. So that's it in a nutshell. There's more details. It's cost free to the town. The brokers who do the RFP process are paid through the rates that ultimately are paid with the power suppliers. It's a mandated fee in the legislation that the broker gets paid not by the town, but through the power suppliers. So it's no cost to the town to embark in this process. And it can potentially lead to more cost effective power.
Questions from the board? Karen?
Just a couple. So I understand how you're bringing it back up with the broker and trying to get competitive rates. I was just a little curious about the way it was worded about down the road. How do we, how do we be sure that we are revisiting to make sure that the pricing is competitive and that if we can't, it remains a good deal for the town?
The way it works, two, two-year, that's how it would work. And so every two years, it's automatically revisited.
And the other question that I had, it was a little confusing about the requirements on public meetings and information. Would that come after, like, the first phase is just to give permission to proceed?
Correct.
So we would have this vote, but there wouldn't be public meetings for?
No.
Okay. That's a little weird because it's, you know...
Well, the public meetings are more about, okay, this is what we, we've got the brokers, this is what we come, get this much in Class 1 renewables, this, you know, our rates would be, you know, it's...
Okay, so this is step one, just to start in Hemmerock?
Exactly. Just to be able to even speak to the brokers and to...
Great opportunity.
We met with Lisa and Lisa and really received a good deep dive with regards to the benefits. And I think it makes a lot of sense for us to start moving forward in the process of getting the lead that we can give our residents in their electricity bills and also controlling that. I think something that you two both brought up to us during our meeting, which I thought was important, is that there are a lot of folks out there knocking on people's doors already, selling renewable energy source plans that may not be the best rates. So this gives us an opportunity to monitor that a little bit better and bring it under the town's control. And folks can go in and out at their, at their leisure. So I think this makes sense, A, the renewable aspect, and also B, obviously from a cost aspect, to give our residents any relief that we possibly can in choice with regards to where they get their energy. So I'm supportive. We move forward. We're starting to tell you. So not really questions, I guess, along standing. Thank you.
Is there a downside?
Is there?
A downside?
A downside?
Yes.
I would brainstorm this a lot, trying to come up with anything we weren't able to. It really is about control, more, more local control of the power sourcing. So I, I don't think, I don't see the downside.
Because I think Tony and I think yourself, you said, shut up your electricity now and you may not get the best price.
Right.
So you think by adopting this, you know, those folks might not monitor it as close?
Right. And the people who want to still, they still can do that. They just opt out of this and...
Yeah, residents...
That's exactly, that's what they're already doing. Residents would be allowed to opt out or go back in or opt out as many times and as frequently as they want with no penalty. Whereas a lot of green contracts that are out there lock you in for at least a two or three year period. And the rates are variable, so you get subject to a fixed higher rate. So we've heard actually, it's Sustainable South Shore, of a lot of horror stories where people tried to do the right thing but got locked into a financially tough situation with green power. The goal of this isn't necessarily rate savings, but it is to align our community values with, with our power sourcing. But also, obviously, rate savings are a great value added bonus if that can be done. And we can charge the town, don't we? But the town can charge the broker with any mandates. Say, you know, we want, you know, to stay within the default, you know, basic service rate of national grid by X percent and yet still slip in some renewables if we can. The town can mandate all the parameters of this contract. Nothing is a done deal until the options are before the board of selectmen. There's nothing, no obligation. You can back out of this until and something is signed.
Joyce?
Yeah. Just a couple of questions. So how does the town, is that the way that you feel the town has control? By putting parameters around the broker?
Mm-hmm.
So we could say the price has to be less than national grid's rate right now?
You can put those parameters in there.
So the one, the one problem that I have with it, and I like the Green Initiative, I like it, I just don't know where our role as selectmen is in allowing someone to take over all of the electricity services for the town and then forcing a citizen to opt out of something. So they're, they're currently with whoever they're with, right?
That's currently the case. With national grid, the default service is not a voluntary option. The default is the default. That would be the same situation.
Right. But, well, that's not us. You know, we're not in the electricity business. That's, I get electricity and I get it from, who was it?
Concentration?
Whose class? No, I don't remember the, but from some aggregator. But now, what would happen is if we sign this, every, every resident in the town is going to have to get this unless I go and say I don't want this.
No, no, and our existing contracts don't get touched. If you're on the default service, yeah, your default underlying plan would move to this unless you opted out. But if you're in an existing power contract with a different supplier, your contract is sacred and it won't be touched.
And again, I'm all for the Green Initiative. I just, I'm questioning our ability to say, okay, everybody that has default coverage with whoever you have, we've changed it.
Well, it's not whoever you have. If you have a national grid customer, default straight.
Okay, so you're a national grid, because you choose national grid. Yeah. So you, you have national grid and now the board of selectmen have decided that you don't have national grid anymore and you have whoever this broker is.
But they won't actually, they still get the bill from national grid and the lines are still owned by national grid. Everything's still national grid. It's just that the actual energy is coming.
It's the source, not the distribution system.
No, I understand how it works. I'm just saying, from a high level, I've just told Sean, who has national grid default, that you don't anymore. You have Tony's energy. And if you don't want it, then you gotta, you gotta actually say, I don't want it. And I just, I feel like it's a little bit backwards. I like the idea of offering it to the residents, but for them opting in as opposed to having an opt-out is, is my question.
And I, maybe I'm misconstruing. In other words, by passing the aggregate, community aggregate, choice aggregate, aggregation, we're giving the ability to opt out of your contracts immediately. In other words, I have national grid. So if this gets passed, I have to opt out of national grid in order to do it.
Yeah. The default for national grid would seamlessly switch over to whatever this board of selectmen assign on. Once the contract is presented to the board that is amenable, that meets all the parameters, that would be a seamless switch. And it'd be an outreach program that would educate residents that as of this day, your default, if you're on the default for national grid, we're going to switch over to our aggregation, which is a local aggregation that we went out to bid for, is going to seamlessly switch. If you don't want that, you can say no thank you. It's either a 1-800 number, it's a very simple no thank you option, and you can stay with national grid's default. But it's like right now, no one is asked right now by national grid, do you want the default? You just get it. So that would not change. It's just that the town has decided that the default now becomes a more locally controlled and potentially greener option. But it is a seamless switch over as of a certain date. So someone does have to go the extra step to opt out of that if they don't want it. And statistically, the reason for that, the legislation was brought about originally, is because the numbers show that when someone has to opt into something, because they're busy and they have daily lives that are all encompassing, they don't educate and learn enough and make that step, even if they wanted to, even if their intentions were in line with what, whatever that was representing. So the legislation was set up that the default does switch over to whatever the town has worked long and hard to obtain as the default. Someone has to go the extra step to opt out. But it's a very simple process and there is an educational outreach beforehand so that people understand that.
As we hope is when you set up the requirements, that when you finish this process, the number that comes out is less than national grid default. So even though you're mandated and someone goes into it, they're going to get a lower price. Is that the same?
You're not guaranteeing that.
I mean... No. The wild card is, if you go, if you say, I want a new energy number, you go to bid, an energy company almost going to guarantee you, is going to give the town a lower number than the national grid default. It's when you start saying, I want 20% renewables, I want 25% renewables, that number starts moving.
Or more likely, what if it's just the same rate? What if they're even? What if it's not the savings? What if it's the same rate as basic service, but it's locally controlled, there's consumer protection, and there's a green option? What do you think most residents would say?
And I'm not against any of that. I'm just wondering what our role as selectmen is in telling people what energy they should use.
Well, it would also go to town.
Because if I was the broker, I would love this, right? I just got 9,000 customers automatically by signing a contract. And, and I'm not saying we don't do it, I'm just saying, I think we have to think about it.
Well, I'm sure there's someone involved in the default power right now that's happy that people don't pay attention and opt out of default power as well. You know, but I'm sure there's people in the oil or fuel industry that are excited when people don't opt out of the default power option.
Right. And again, I'm just wondering what's our role as the five of us here?
I just want to, the other thing that's going on, when you get to the end, you get a price, you can say no.
Yeah, but someone has to, someone has to make the effort to get out of it. I agree.
My point is, when you go through this whole process, you set your parameters, and I'm just going to, we want 25% renewables, we want this, we want this, we want this. The broker goes out, he sends it out to the market, the energy producer comes back and say, this is the number. And you look at the number and say, we don't like it, it's too hot. You just don't accept it. Then if no plans or energy prices are acceptable, there is no obligation for the town to proceed this right on the document. So if the number comes out 15 and the default is 14, you say, well, I've got to proceed.
I understand. So let's say the five of us were very green and we said, we don't care about the price. We just want it to be 75% green. So all of a sudden, we've just, and the price for green is 20% more than what our current residents are paying for the default, then their energy is going to be automatically changed to that unless they go and opt out?
If you proceed with the contract.
So that's why I just want to talk about it before we...
But isn't that, may I ask for a point of clarification? Isn't this just, so this piece of it is just to do all this research, to say, yes, we want to go forward, special town meeting, get approval, start researching and working with the broker and finding out what those rates are? When that, all that information comes back to us, we're not just going to sign a contract, it's going to go back in front of town meeting to be approved. So, I mean, I agree with you, there's got to be some sort of cost savings in my mind and renewables. That would be my objective. So it's still going to be up to the townspeople at town meeting to accept the plan to move forward or not. So it's not like this particular step automatically is saying, we're moving forward and no choices are being given.
I guess that's my question. What is the town voting on? Are they voting on the actual contract?
No.
No, they're just voting on the initiative. So if three of us were over the top green and said, we want it to be 100% renewable, then this would happen. Because town has given us the ability to negotiate the contract. We negotiated the contract the way we wanted to, and we've just done whatever we wanted to, everyone's electical.
Right. But at most cities and towns that are, have gone forward with a green initiative have been very sensitive to residential rate, you know, sensitivity. And if they wanted an excessively green option to be out there for their residents, what they've done is they've provided two choices as part of this program. In other words, you know, one that's within the same rate of the basic service that the utility currently offers, that offers maybe only 5% green, additional green power. And then there's 100% renewable option that costs rate payers more, but they have to opt for that. So like the town of Acton did that. They have, you know, one that's much more in keeping with the current rate, you know, that it's a mix of, of energy sourcing. And then another one that's for the real green people in the, in the town that want to go 100% renewable. And that is a more costly option, but it's up to the resident to choose it. At least this way, with aggregation, the town is using a broker to vet out a sound two, three-year contract with consumer protections. It makes all those door-to-door, you know, door knockers that are peddling green energy kind of disappear because people know, oh no, my town's got my back. I know my options, I can be greener if I want, or I can stay with, you know, close to the current mix for about the same rate, if not less, which is a great, you know, thing if that can work. But there are protections at least, it's more of a...
What are the protections?
Well, the protection is that the rate is guaranteed and it's as competitive as of the date the contract is signed, if not better, whatever the terms are at the time the town signs the contract. It is, you know, the best rate at that time and that'll come up for renewal in two or three years, but it's a known.
Right. Well, that's what I have, with my, whatever company I have. But there's no protection, it's just a contract for two years.
Well, at least like we've heard horror stories where some people that went with green options, the rate was variable. And the rate ran up and then they were locked in for three years and said, I can't afford this anymore, I want to go back to national grid's default, but I can't get out of this contract without a penalty. There's no penalties here to get out of it. A resident can opt in and out with no penalty if they don't like it, or if they want to go even greener with another third party, they can still do that. But at least this freedom, and the town has done their best to do this competitive bid process with both rate payers and community values in lock.
Again, I'm all for the Green Initiative. I just don't know of any situation where we've gone in and impacted a personal bill that somebody gets for their, you know, for their, for their homes.
Well, if it's a savings, I would assume you're all the champions and heroes. And if it's not, they have absolutely every option to be not part of it by saying no thank you. And we, we are committed, so, so sure, we would help with the outreach as we did with the wind turbine, as, you know, we're committed to getting outreach and any educational information out there. There's all sorts of whiteboard presentations that we can do, websites and things to help people.
Again, I'm not, I'm really not... Again, I'm not, I'm really not, talking about your product and your initiative, I like it, I think it's great. I'm talking about what our role as selectmen should and shouldn't be for utility.
Yeah, I'm thinking, it's, it may not be this board, it may be future boards, and what it will do. And I think we do get a point where we're not experts in the utility bill. So it kind of puts a burden on us as a board, that if we make a mistake, choose something that, obviously, people have to be aware of the rates, what they're opting to, to utilize. And if it turns out it's something they don't like, then they have to opt out. Not every resident is gonna be watching their utility bill to figure out whether they can get other options or something like that. So I do see the potential flaw on that. I actually thought that if we did this and we had to opt in, that's a better way of doing it. Because then you're in the default and you opt in to getting into what we think as a town would be a better thing. But it doesn't, it does have, I think it does have...
Well, the town made a decision back a while ago to have a renewable energy committee. I'm not sure what happened with that committee to spearhead the wind turbine and solar array municipal power. And the Mass General laws, obviously, the state, the Conal laws made a decision to enable communities to do this because they knew that local, local grassroots efforts to look at power supplies were important to becoming a more sustainable common pump. So as, I think the appetite for this in our community is huge. I know that. I've been surveying people's appetite for these types of things for many years. I was here with Al Banger when the turbine came up, and they thought no one would approve that. And it, it, it worked. I mean, people actually care. We are a coastal community. 2017 storm damages were huge. We had a lot of reason to be on the forefront of clean power. I won't go into those reasons, but I think the appetite's huge. I think it's a great opportunity that the Mass General laws enabled us to do, to, to take on.
Sean.
Any experience in New York, the towns trip list, Lynn Field goal?
No, Lynn Field was a beauty. So they had municipal power deposit, not eligible for this. Nor, we didn't do the municipal aggregation for the town anybody, but we did bid out energy for the town buildings, the town gas, the town electricity. That came up very well. So we went on the, I mean, I know a lot of the towns that do it. You know, I think what the board has to say is, you want to make sure that at the end, the rate's gonna be either the same or low. Because then there's no damage, lack of a term to the, to the homework. I think most people don't even look, they don't know where the energy comes from, they don't know if it's a fault or if they sign up, if they're getting a load of side, they're getting electricity from somebody else. I mean, it just, it comes to your house. I think that's most people, comes to your house.
The town of Markland just approved this.
One, we...
I just have one more question. Do we have the option to, to switch in? In our town, we, we want it to be an opt-in and not an opt-out. You know, we can't have that simple little tweak.
Because the smaller percentage, you know, think to...
The rate they put there.
Because they, the company's bidding a lot of pools, it's opt-in, they're not sure of the pool. So they have data that says, the pool's this big, we get a loss of X percent. So they know how much electricity they're actually gonna have to supply.
Jim, that's the same reason you just said. We would just change 9,000 people's bills and 4,000 wouldn't know and wouldn't care. And, you know, this company, this broker's now got 4,000 customers because nobody looks at the utility bill.
Right. But again, I'd say it's probably closer to 8,000, 900, wouldn't care, wouldn't notice as 9,000, because most people don't know. And the people that know are already someplace else. Like, you're already someplace else. You went and did the work. Most people don't do the work. They look at it, they go, light's on, I'm good. I'm not gonna follow this whole ring world to try to find more electricity. Because I don't know, it could go up, could go down. Light comes on, I'm good. They confuse the supply, the distribution, you know, like given a national grid, the tree falls down, who's gonna come put the wire back up? Gonna get into all that. But if you structure it right, it should be a win for the consumer. And if it's not, you can just say, no, slightly go forward.
Just, this is just another question for you, Jim. Again, with Tony's saying, is there any mechanism that could put control on future boards to not, you know, to work within certain parameters?
No. So you, you will have a contract that you've got off and purchase energy for, for a separate time. You will then have to law procure it again at the end of that time. So a new board can come in and say, as Tony's been saying, we're the greatest board in the country. We want 100% for our residents.
Well, that, that's my question then. Is there any, has ever, have we ever, has there ever been an issue that the town instructs the board on parameters? Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, like put town meeting articles? Or, you could, but it's not binding.
Yeah, okay.
So the town authorizes the board to issue debt. The town can't require the board to issue debt. So...
Or limit it.
So, they give you instructions on this? I mean, I would think the goal of it for the board would be to come up with, if you wanted to have a green plan, you'd have a green plan. But if you want a plan, that would come out at the end. The default plan would be cheaper than what people are paying now. That's what I think you'd want to do. Then a green plan over here, look, if you want 100% renewable, here's your plan. You can go up and take this, and solar, it's, it's wind, it's tide, it's whatever. But I think the, the end game for this board anyways, would be, if we did this, it's got some green in it, but in the end, it's cheaper than what you're paying now.
And the legislation requires a very robust public outreach, is that correct?
Yes, and then brokers, they're responsible.
Yes.
So why don't we do this? Sounds like we may not be in the mood to take a vote on this tonight.
I mean, I just think it's a discussion.
This is just the enabling language. I just want to reiterate, it's really important. This is just to move forward with exploring the process of getting a broker and moving forward with going out to bid and putting the parameters around it. It would really just be the enabling language at this point to, to explore it.
So what I'm saying is, this is to add it to our false special town meeting till the morning. And I was gonna say, is this something that we want to vote on tonight or want to put it on the next meeting on September 4th? Morning's gonna be open at that time. So I further, we can further...
I have one question, Sean.
Yeah.
So can you opt out at any point in time and opt back? So one day you can opt in, one day you can opt out, one year? So, I mean, obviously, the worst case scenario would be, we change somebody's rates for a two-year contract, it's comparable to national grid default. And then the next day, they brought their default to...
Something lower.
Something lower. The guy doesn't know about it for two years, comes back to us and says, hey, you forced me to take this thing.
No one forced him. No one forced him. He could always opt out.
We made the decision to buy him. They're gonna see...
He'll know that in advance. He will know that in the beginning. They're obligated to know.
No, but to Tony's point is, you get a, you get a, a rate that's cheaper than the default national grid. And then all of a sudden, seasons change, you know, eight, nine months later, it drops national grid. Now our, the town's default is, is higher, and it's for the duration. And then two years go by and they go, wait a minute, it was cheaper, but now you've made me spend all this, I could have gone with national grid and saved money. That's what we're gonna hear, or future boards would hear. They'll be like, you know, so that's why I, I think it's a, I think it's something that we need a board. And here's the other thing, to your point, the board is gonna be saddled with making these decisions, which are good from a policy standpoint, creating clean energy, I get that. But, you know, it's, it's a big step for the board to have that power, if you will. So I don't, I'm, I'm happy to vote on it tonight, but I'm also, do you want to wait two weeks? I mean, talk to people, and then we'll bring it back and put it on the agenda to have a final vote to put it on the... I don't have the default rate, but I just did a search for power 02066. So the rates I'm looking at right now, 13.5, 12.29. The latest aggregation that I've seen was Avakin, which is 11.057. So just, if you do it right, you structure it correctly, it's gonna be a lower price.
Yeah, I can't emphasize enough the ability to go out to bid at a time of the year that the power companies are not allowed to go out to bid at. It's the timing issue. We can get the same, we can get power for less as a community.
That's something the broker has to, yeah, he has to look at the market and say, now's the time to opt in. But then you, you basically, you've got your weather gas going up and down.
We'll have to come to time and waiting to the fourth, just to, we're not at special town meeting, folks need to think about it some more.
How's it work, Phil?
Yeah, we'll make a difference if we put it up on what we do, and the characters can look at it.
I could, but I, I also think that, you know, this is just so we can start doing the homework. We're not committing to anything. So I, I don't see the downside of actually...
Well, we're actually gonna try and put it on, on warrant. Then, then you go and 110 people show up, they've voted, and then...
That's just to move forward.
That's just to do the homework. Yeah.
It's still just to do the homework.
This is just to explore what our parameters would be and what we would want to put out.
Exactly.
No, but that's the logical next step, right? I mean, you're not gonna get it voted at town meeting if you're not gonna do it. So then we come up with parameters and...
I don't think that's true. I think that if they go to the end of the day and they say, yeah, it's gonna cost you $15, we're gonna go, yeah, never mind.
Yeah, there's nothing binding at that point. It's just that you could explore the process. No contracts or, you can walk away. Okay, you understood.
I think Tony's point is, yes, we can explore the process and walk away, but a, a board of selectmen, so this board, the board of selectmen can go through the whole process and lock people out at a rate that may not be to that advantage to them.
And I don't, I don't, I like the initiative. I, I would probably vote in favor. I just want to make sure that we're on the same page with, we want to take control of people's electrical source. And, you know, and we can justify it by saying, I went before the town meeting and all 125, we voted in favor of it. So that's why we changed 9,000 people's power bill. You know, we could, we could justify it. And we would say the broker went out and did his due diligence in terms of educating the people, there were flyers or whatever went on. I just think we all need to think about whether we want to do that.
So I'd say, why don't we wait until the next meeting to vote on this, this issue? It's not saying no. It's just that I think, you know, for us to kind of go out to maybe our neighbors and friends and see what kind of feedback we have.
The only point of clarification I would make is that you're not deciding their power. You're simply changing the default from whatever contracts and negotiations were done with the power distributors such as national grid, to make their default what it is. And who knows what goes behind that?
We are, we understand. I think we are.
But you're not forcing anyone to...
By changing the default, we've changed their power source.
If they're on the default. If they're on the default.
Do you have any people in situ at all?
Probably the majority, but I don't know.
So we just changed the majority of people's...
And that happens annually through national grid anyway.
So let's do this. I, I gotta move on our agenda. So I'd like to see if we bump this again. It's not saying we're not going to support it, just I think we need to think a little bit on it. Otherwise, we could be talking about this for another half hour.
Would it be helpful to have, um, contacts from the, some of the other towns and town managers and stuff?
Sure. I mean, for our next meeting, that would be fine. All right. Is that what came to the board?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So that being said, we have another one. We have the next one, which is a discussion of the plastic bag. So Lisa, are you solo then on this one?
No. Brother team.
So since last week's talk, you've given us a proposal for a, a motion for the warrant, actually a, or an article to be able to ban the plastic bag. And you'd like to have that for the fall special town meeting?
Yes. And just, we did do our homework as well. A few of you had asked that we reach out to some of the major businesses that would be affected by this. So we went to Village Market in particular and spoke with Ray Peterson, the manager. And he was, he was actually great. He walked in, he's like, I've been waiting for this to happen. We've been talking about this for a while. The owners have already, had already been discussing incentives that they can give to customers for bringing their own bag in. Because that's definitely what our, you know, role would like to be, and is going, planning to be, and we spoke to Ray about that, is doing real community outreach, is bringing their own bag. This is not a paper versus plastic thing. It's really about the importance of bringing your own bag and thus, you know, negating the use or need for the plastic bags. So he was very supportive. He said, you know, yes, you can have tables set up out front here, you know, really was on board. So I was, we're delighted about that. Went to a few other, like restaurants that still use them, and they, and just like, yeah, you get paper bags, it's not, it's really not a, I don't have sense.
All right. So questions from the board? Ready on this? I'm, I'm in support of pointing it on the warrant, so I'm, I'm happy to put that on.
I am as well.
So you're gonna go to the supermarket in the harbor and get, if you don't have your own bags, you know, do you, you know, they'll provide paper bags?
Yes.
Any idea where, we recycle a lot of those bags? You know, right now, we get plastic, let's say we get all plastic bags, no paper at all. Which percentage of people would recycle those versus put them inside of their $2 bags that we buy?
Recycle which?
Well, how many people would recycle a little small, color like a $2 bag with the handles? That's what most...
The plastic bags that actually get recycled? Yeah, it's less than 5%.
That can't recycle?
Yeah. There's such, there's such a challenge. If the only place you can even bring them now is two supermarkets that actually accept them. And then if there are any, if there's any dirt on them, if there's any, anything, they're actually just gonna throw them away.
There's very few things you can do with those. Things after you get, take groceries hot. So they end up in the bucket bag, two bucks a bag, whatever, I don't buy the bags. But the bags that we provide, pets are just thrown. So those small bags end up in the larger bags.
Yeah, or in the ocean, or floating around, trees you see.
Oh, I only pick them out of the pride. It's always fun. I'm just trying to, just trying to dig out it. So 98% of those, like, see us, they get burnt. But I, I don't really have a problem just trying to follow along with that.
My only question was, who's gonna enforce it?
It was the Board of Health.
So the Board of Health will go and monitor, so someone will probably complain, you know, make a complaint that someone was using a paper bag, a plastic bag to the Board of Health and that they were doing...
That, or they're coming, they going to their, I don't know, how often, they going monthly, weekly to the, generally, you know, going to the store for, you know, the reasons why they do, and they would be adding to their business. And we put in the, the warrant for the article, sorry, for the different offenses, first offense, written things.
Did anyone you talked to mention the difference? Because they're gonna have to provide some sort of a bag. So they'll provide a brown paper bag instead of a plastic bag, I guess like a grocery store or something?
Yes.
Did anyone mention the cost between the two, and that was a problem to them, or?
They did not. He did not, because he emphasized, they emphasized, or every person we spoke to emphasized the fact that, oh, we're, we really want people to bring their own bag.
Right.
So eventually, the cost, it's a cost savings for them.
And the Village Market sells its own recyclable, multi-use bags on site. So if you forget one, you can buy one.
Yeah, but they will, they will have to have paper bags.
Correct.
And restaurants, whatever, they're gonna use for, for carryout, will have to provide something. No one mentioned that this is 10 cents compared to a penny or anything like that?
No, because they said they...
They have them?
Yeah, correct, they have them. But as well, if they're, in the end, they're likely will be using less things, we will have to be spending less on bags because people will be bringing their own.
Sean? Is there a negative environmental impact if you turn a paper bag, if you turn like, really not? It's actually probably not a bad thing. Because you, you see the bags you get at Home Depot, you put your yard waste in them, and you'll throw them down at the windmill, or wherever they recycle, in the paper bags.
They're compostable.
Yeah, so they can all round up and they actually probably, can hold moisture, which could be a good thing.
The big difference has to do with more of a town getting rid of materials. So it's, you know, the tonnage is greater when you use paper because it's heavier. It's on that scale rather than a... It's on that scale rather than a consumer scale. So it's your cardboard recycling or whatever, but it's hard to know how much of that we have going out.
In the endgame is, use those canvas bags, and so, you know, once people get used to that, then that's, that's a great thing. You don't have any difference.
Just one more. When you spoke with the establishments in New York, you had the six months to have that lead time once the bylaw goes into effect. They've got six months to get their establishment up and running, all plastic bags out. Was that adequate time for them?
It seems like it. I mean, just verbally, you know, asked them, and then we, they have looked into some of the other towns that have done it.
And it's been six months?
And it hasn't been yet. It's all been six months. And there have been a few, they can't ask for an extension if they need.
Okay. Great.
One thing you might think about is, is again, in touch with the Chamber of Commerce and even the merchants, carbon merchants, six wood merchants, just so that they're aware that this is going on the ballot or going on the warrant. So the reason is, is that they might contact you and give you current feedback. Rather hear it now than to hear it on town floor. That's all.
And we're hoping for that to be a productive partnership in terms of making, you know, awareness and maybe some creative.
Yep.
Creative awareness.
That being said, the motion?
Just keep going. Should I please? My base to the rest.
Thank you.
And John, I have two questions. One would be, if the bylaw was into effect, and you have your own plastic bags, and you bring those to the supermarket, is that a violation? How would we fight?
No.
So some people like me have 10 years' supply of plastic bags at home. But my other question would be, I mean, it's really consideration to the meaning of this discussion, the banning of plastic six-pack haulers, which is one of the biggest killers of marine freight on the planet, and whether that's any part of any of this discussion included.
Have you folks considered that?
We have, and we have a vote there, and we have a straw. So we could, so this is the topic. If we're ever here, we'd love to. But right now, we wanted to.
That would be a good, that would be one for the future, this one out of our. So short answer is no. Any other questions, folks? Entertained motion?
I'll make a motion that the board add the plastic bag ban to the full special town meeting warrant. Second.
Motion by Ms. Kern, seconded by Ms. Campfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. And then I guess Lisa will see you back in two weeks. Ladies, thank you very much. Let's move on now to the 8:20 discussion vote, Sichuan Town Library, ADA Walkway. See Noel out there and Joe. Gentlemen. Joey, you going to talk to us about the walkway here?
Sure. I would say, a little over two months ago, we were exploring the different options to allow us to find a handicap accessibility from Branch Street up to the library. Owen Elo's had done an exceptional job, come up with a couple of variations. They provided documentation and a set of plans for, to me, to allow me to solicit some costs associated with dividing that walkway from Branch Street up. I solicited three local companies and one outside of Sichuan, which every contractor this time of year is very big. So I was able to get a number to provide that walkway. We elected to hold off until the summer was over to allow residents to use the library, and we'll do it in the off season. It just made the most sense. We're here now in front of you to be asked to move forward with that direction on the installation of the walkway. Provided the cost of that and utilizing a little bit of the bid savings that we had turned back from the library project, we'd utilize it to stay within our procurement for the project and still be able to turn back the remainder of the money.
What's the present grade right now on the walkway up here? Is it 17% or?
No, that's the actual elevation change from Branch Street to the entrance. It varies, but it, it varies from, essentially it needs to be less than 5%, and the majority of it is over 5% slope.
So then the proposal is to put a switchback in to connect to there, from, obviously from the base of Branch Street up?
And that basically heads towards the Sichuan library side, and then goes around the atrium, and then meets up with the old walk on the lower level.
And then once you're able to get there, you have access by, vis a vis the lower level entrance and in?
That's right. Right, so it doesn't take you all the way up to the main entrance. We reviewed three options with the Architectural Access Board, the State Board, and they accepted the option providing access to the lower level entrance.
This is actually for the library. So Jesse, then this door is going to be open. Is it open all the time? Because that's going to be their access.
It's not. We don't have the staff to be able to monitor that, that area. We have a camera already on that lower level, so we discussed tapping into that camera lead, which can be done, and being able to buzz people in. So that's, that's what we've been discussing.
Is that acceptable? Will it be acceptable once we get all of it done?
Yeah, and that's what we had reviewed with the Access Board. That was the proposal submitted.
Sort of the doorbell?
It'd be a button to a front.
I can see the Access Board saying, because it's an entryway, that they'll allow that in. I just want to make sure, maybe it's a discussion that we have to have because, I want to make sure that it's, it's, how do I put this? Each access is, is the same. There's no disparity between one entry to the other. So Jesse, that might be a discussion we have to figure out further, because the door's got to be accessible over for people. All right, so that's what the plan is then, to put the switchback, to go back and forth to link with this lower section so that people can come in with a wheelchair if they're coming from Branch Street. Correct? $25,000 would you need to be able to do it?
Question, to build a, to build a winding sidewalk to here? How many, how long is it?
It's about 175 feet. So the project in total is the existing sidewalk on the outside of Branch Street. We need to tab out to the, to the actual street paving, paint the crosswalk, and then do a landing on the library side of the street, and then the pathway to this entrance. So that's the full project in total.
So some of this, part of this project is to do work that's beyond the property, the library's property, that is really to reinstate the striping that was there before the roadway project had happened. So this, this request for the money encompasses that full scope of work.
That's a good thing.
Can't we do the striping ourselves? Do we, maybe, sidewalk cuts?
There's a minor improvement that you have to make on the far side of Branch Street to tie into.
To make the.
There's an asphalt walkway that's there, and there's a, there's a capecot berm that has to be cut through to make that connection.
An asphalt berm. Just for those people who might be watching tonight for the first time, how did this happen? Like, five more across the street from the grade of this building didn't change. So how did this get missed?
I wanted to explain that. Yeah. Conrad Elo with Owens Elo Architecture. First of all, we take ADA accessibility really seriously. It's an important part of the work that we do, and this building is fully accessible. Certainly, we provided the handicap parking spaces at the top entrance. We introduced some new handicap parking spaces at the lower entrance, which didn't exist beforehand. We improved the walkway that comes across from the elderly housing and the bus stop, I guess that Central Park Drive. And the reason the walkway that was reinstalled was essentially the existing walkway that was there. We made some of the steepest parts of that slope a little less steep. The reason that was not meeting the accessible route requirements is because of the existing topography, it's so steep, it's steeper than 5%. And there's an exception in the accessibility code in the Mass General Rules that we thought was applicable here. It was a, it was a public walk along a public way, you know, accessing the parking lot that we felt fell within this exception. The Access Board didn't agree, and that's where this has come up. And so now we're required to address that difference of opinion. But it was our co-consultants, our design team, that was our professional opinion, that we fell within a certain requirement. Bob Vogel certainly was involved in those discussions, and I don't want to speak for him, but he was supportive of that position as well. He's supportive of this improvement that we're making to the project. But that was, that was why, it wasn't as if we just, you know, negligently, didn't address accessibility. We felt, we felt we had a case here, that this was a steep existing condition.
Do your switchbacks, we talked a little bit, so our own projects, so you do have resting spots, but then we desolate it in climb, what is it, declines?
I don't want to clarify, there are no, no switchbacks or handrails. The entire.
That's required.
There's none that are required. Right. The entire walkway is less than 5% grade, and it's of the required width, and it's of a length that you don't actually need. With longer ramps, you will need a wider section for crossing. As if it exceeds 200 feet in length, this does not exceed 200 feet in length.
So it's not technically a ramp by definition. It's, it's a sloped walkway. So it'll look like just normal sidewalk, and it's just, it's staying all under 5%.
I just, I don't, you proved me wrong once, and that's fine. I proved you wrong twice. I want you, all right? But on Elm Street, we, you know, and I don't know anything about it, but we had to have a resting spot for the folks to cross Elm Street, and that's, we have an island in the middle, and that is 30, 40 feet long. So your ramp, I just, I just, just, guys, just do it right. That's all I'm asking. Motel.
Making every effort to do it right. Certainly don't want to.
I don't like your advice twice.
Prove it wrong.
Well, I know, I know that they could do switchbacks.
But then not.
5%.
But then not. It's going to be one continuous ramp, right?
That's where it's off. And I don't want you to have the, the drawing as an exhibit.
We don't.
I'm happy to, to share a few copies, just to clarify.
Well, he's bringing those up here. What was the exception you were looking for?
So it, there's an exception in the code. It's, it's, it's the Code of Massachusetts Regulations 22.3, which deals with walkways, accessible walkways, or walkway grading. Basically, the exception says that sidewalks on streets and ways with a natural slope that exceeds 5% need not be, by definition, a ramp. This slope, you know, the 17 feet that we had to navigate between an existing entrance, an existing building, and Branch Street, I, you know, just by natural topography, was greater than 5%. So we felt we were in that exception.
How, how do we expect handicap people to get to the entrance?
So with the design and the, even with the, the review with the town, was that the architect made the provisions that the accessibility would get to the parking lot? So any one of these parking lots and parking spaces was accessible?
Yeah, so we were providing accessibility from, from the handicapped spots, number one. We had also a completely accessible route from outside the property by way of Central Park Drive. And that's also where the public bus stop is. So that was, that was provided as part of the base. So we already had, we had accessibility, we just didn't have it from every street.
If the, if the walkway that currently is in place was never in place, this wouldn't have been an issue unless it was brought.
In other words, if you didn't offer a walkway from Branch Street.
So if it wasn't a sidewalk, we wouldn't have to do it?
Yeah, probably wouldn't have done it.
But still, how would someone, how would someone walk to the library and get in?
They would, they would basically drive up to it or have access to it through another avenue.
Or you've come from Central Park Drive, or from another, another road.
But either way, this was.
So you, so we actually thought about this and decided that that was not necessary?
Yes, during the design process, yeah. And this was, not, I mean, this is, you know, we're responsible for providing, for providing a project that works. But this was, many, many eyes were on this. This went through a pretty exhaustive planning board review process. And again, Bob, you know, Bob reviewed all the drawings as well, and I think was supportive of that exception.
But there was a group of people that looked at it and said, we don't have to have a handicap access from walking on Branch Street to the front entrance of the library.
Because of the position the architect and team maintained?
Well, because of this existing, it was an existing building, an existing grade, an existing condition, but it's not to say we weren't providing accessibility to the library.
If we get access over here, we'd get access.
There are multiple ways.
They thought the accessibility was there based on the design that was in place.
And that was people from the town, outside of you guys, said, yes, that's fine.
So the one board that should have probably had a review on this would have been the Commission on Disabilities. I think, I don't think they had an eye on this. And I think internally, that's something that we, the town, need to ensure that they have a chance to review, because I'd be willing to bet they would have probably picked up on it.
Yeah, normally with a planning board review process, you know, all the departments, DTW, CONCON, whatever it is, whatever departments need to weigh in.
Conrad, I agree with you, but I, I think one of the things that I've found, that accessibility has been something that has, has been marginalized, not intentionally, but until you get injured, until you have somebody who.
Needs scratches or a chair.
Needs the ability to get around, you begin to realize that there are a lot of barriers. And I think, you know, certainly, we have a goal to our people, you know, to, to review town structures, which I think every town should do, we need to do, because there's so many places that are inaccessible. And I just, I think, you know, the boards, they work hard, and I'm not trying to denigrate them, but again, I think that's sometimes over, over, over missed, that there's an oversight there. And I think that's something that we need to do better, because, to be honest with you, it got missed. I realized, took a position on it, but I, in retrospect, I'm like, we should have made sure it was done anyways.
Well, I think that's why, why we're making sure it gets done now.
Yeah, and my point was, we didn't miss it. We chose not to do it.
May I?
Yeah.
Good. Well, I think you raised a good point that I sort of want to address now, because we tend to always come back to things. So right now, we've got the plans that we're just going to slap a sign on the outside door with a number for folks to call when they're standing there or sitting there. I find that unacceptable. I think the doorbell's got to be put in at the same time or whatever, so folks can really have access into the lower level. I think having someone out there in the rain, the snow, and having to make a phone call, having someone have to be on the other end of that phone call to be allowed into the building, isn't really where we want it yet. So I don't know how we put in a, a doorbell or whatever that system is with this fix so you don't have to come back again. It's something that I would prefer to see done.
Well, that's a question, Jim, maybe, I know you were trying to figure out when you're talking about this, I asked Jesse, is that the intent right now is that if someone comes up, if they're in a wheelchair, the door's locked. I don't think that personally can be. And they don't have to stay up supposedly, but I'm like, I think it's a discussion that you'd have, because I'm like, the door's got to be open for somebody. There, whether it's a camera, or something.
The difference on that door hardware setup, you'd have to do either like a maglock with controls from the, from the second place. So when they got buzzed, they'd hit a button, and that lock would release at that point.
We've got to save on the tools.
Can we prove that?
We could, yeah, I can explore that, yeah.
That is no. I want to make sure it's done right for people to, I'm in a wheelchair, I'm going to be able to not sit out there raining or snowing or something.
So I've done that recently on a door, and it's about $4,000 to $5,000 to do the maglock that way with a mother.
Just so you know, what we presented to the Access Board was three options. We did present another option, which, which included switchback ramps and handrails, getting you all the way to the front door. And that's something you could choose to do. It's, it's more money, and it's going to be more invasive.
Why would that be Conrad up here?
That would be basically, we did a, I mean, that's, I think from roughly the lower entrance of the building up, you introduce a series of switchback ramps into that hillside where the sort of planted terraces now. It would be significantly more than the, than the, than the sloped walkway to the lower entrance. It would be significantly more than the, than the sloped walkway to the lower entrance. And it wasn't required of the access board that you implement that. That's another option.
And I don't think it's a question of money, but if a person's in a wheelchair, they might go, with the weather, water, doing that.
That's absolutely right. And there's also the issue of just how many, what, how many people I, I know, I'm some, I agree that, you know, even if one person is coming along that walkway, you want to treat them equitably and fairly, but there just, is probably so, so little demand that people would be coming by wheelchair along that walkway anyway, not to mention that it's a longer route from the street to get up to the, up that further climb.
So I'll go to Mark.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Joe, you just said that if we approved this, then it will be fall, will start date?
Yeah, we'll be fully out before you.
Contractors already looked at it, priced it. The design is complete and ready to go.
How long do you think it'll take construction last?
We worked probably a week, week and a half.
I just think once, once we get that straightened out, we have the crosswalk and in schools in session, there'll be a lot more bikes, which will be a good thing to do.
One last.
So just the math, so that's about $150 a foot for the sidewalk, for the path, is that in the north?
Yeah, I mean, it's.
And it's just some net, right?
Yeah, but it's prevailing wage.
Well, there's some other, are you talking about the $25,000 figure?
Yeah.
So I think the, the actual concrete work was 16 grand of that 25,000. And so it's less than that for the concrete, but there's some warning strips, striping, there would be the signage on the, on the glass of the door. So all those things are wrapped into that $25,000 number. So it's, it's, it's hard to just say it's.
Yeah, accessibility.
$150 something a foot of sidewalk.
It just sounds expensive. Sean, I don't know, you have more, probably more knowledge than me on that. It just sounds expensive for.
There's a tree removal to. There's a tree, there's a couple of other things in there that are sort of related to the, to the project.
It's like a doll's foot, but that's private.
It may come in less than, I mean, obviously we'll use.
We've been very tight with.
What minimum it is, but that was, wanted to not have to come back.
What is the bid for more?
I think the bid for the concrete work.
Was 16, but that, what we had extras with the removal of the tree, that the handicap accessible ramps that would be coming off of the streets on each side, striping, disposable material, I mean, it was, it was a number of things with that.
Mike?
My case, $35,000. First, I want to commend the board for, for looking into this issue and proposing a change. I can tell you from my perspective, it's some personal experience from when there were public savings from. And I've been to many and I've been to some that have gone beyond the library hours. The only way currently, unless you want the police meeting you in your driveway if you walk out the front door, which happened to me once, but is to have public access outside here for people with mobility issues and frankly, parking. Because the evening that I chose to go up the elevator and go up the front doors, because my car was on the upper level. If it was on the, if there was parking on the lower level and a public entrance or some mechanism to, you know, bring people in or whatever it may be, it makes a huge difference rather than walking up that steep hill. So did I hear, Kurt, that they would, that part of the proposal is for some handicap parking in the lower level?
There is handicap parking here at the lower level already.
I must have missed that.
Yeah, there's two spots and a crosswalk and an accessible walk to get to the door.
Is it not there?
It's right there, sorry.
Right out there. That, that already exists.
But. I must have missed that.
Well, I agree. That's why I'm like, having been here before meetings in the prior building, that was the exit, the library gets shut down. Sort of like, I can see how that's, it will be used publicly, so I'm right. And we'll figure out logistics, but just long we have a system in place that's going to work. Any other questions? Motion.
Do the board selectmen release $25,000 contingency town for ADA walkway improvements at the Situate Town Library?
Motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by.
Second.
Mr. Harris, all those in favor?
Aye.
John, thank you very much.
Thank you. I also want to commend you, and obviously the sound is not existing anymore, so we're proud of getting that resolved.
We were relieved, there's some little loose ends, we're still tying up.
Good job.
You can hear it.
Yeah, it's working.
Do you want these back?
Thank you. All right, now we're going to move on to the 8:30 discussion. We're getting a little backed up here for White Ash Farm Open Space Donation. Tony Michael Hayes is here, the developer, and I think this is a final, we need to vote, is it Mike, on the, is it a deed that the town is accepting, is that it?
Deed, yes, a deed to the open space, about almost nine acres, that the conservation, it's requirement of the open, plus the open space subdivisions. And the Conservation Commission has accepted this land because it abuts public water supply. So I have the deed here that I think is in your package, that has been signed by Sharon, the owner, and his daughter, the co-owner. So I have the deed here for you, if you voted to sign it and give it back to me if you want, and I can get it recorded or whatever your pleasure is.
Any questions for the board?
No, it's a straight up housekeeping, housekeeping.
Yeah, it's, it's taken some time, some time.
How many acres is it, six?
Well, there's a total of almost nine. There's six acres and 2.2. Some of this is upland and some is, is wetland, but total of almost nine.
All right, motion?
Move that board's selectmen accept open space to be reserved, but in a wish to return to Situate, conservation purposes outlined in the lot layout plan quote in White Ash Farm Lane quote prepared by Morse Engineering on February 19, 2013.
Motion by Mrs. Canfield, seconded by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Mike, we can, if you can leave that with Michelle, we'll sign it at the end and then, Michelle, can that be available tomorrow morning?
You know what, I think we have it, but I'll.
Great.
And just so you know, the deed was approved by Tom Schatz. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, now we're going to move on to the 8:40 discussion, New Company Sewer Connection. John Drew, and are they here?
Right.
And.
I think the copies that you have do not reflect this agenda item, but on the website, this is posted agenda. So my apologies for that.
Gentlemen?
Good day.
Hi, Director of Planning and Development for the Town of Situate.
See you both. Thank you for having us on, having them on tonight. We provide some kind of context, but it's quite weird here tonight. So if you remember, I think it was a month or so ago, your company came for you to get your blessing to move forward, coming up, if you remember the two track kind of options for this potential sewer connection agreement. The two tracks would be, one would be, and I'll get into Baltimore detail in just a second, the, one would be the kind of grant option, where we were pursuing funding from the Mass Works State Grant Program. And the other is the non-grant option. So in the meantime, in the last, again, since the last time they met, came before you, we were working with them closely, both myself, DPW, Town Administrator, involved in that with them to discuss kind of the details of these two options. And just, again, just, just sort of reminder of the key points of this proposal of the project and why, you know, in particular, I think this proposal has garnered a lot of support, that it's consistent with the town's established vision of Green Bush and the master plan. This is a pedestrian to trains at the moment, a development located in the vacant parking lot adjacent to the Green Bush train rail station. Provides much needed affordable housing, minimizes environmental and traffic impact since it's predeveloping an underutilized parking lot within an area that already has a traffic signal. Significant support in town, various boards, EDC, planning board, again, that have come for you in the past, and other kind of town support, if you will. There have been previous proposals for the site, but none have met as many local planning objectives nor state objectives as the proposals before the town right now. But as we discussed at the last meeting, I don't think it's support for the project or this project being the right fit, that's the issue, I think it's sewer capacity. So that's why, again, they've been doing their due diligence and working with us to try and come up with some solutions. So to go into those two details in a little bit more, or two options in a little bit more detail, the first is the grant option. So just last week, August 13th, we submitted a grant to the Mass Works Infrastructure Grant Program. In that application, the town is requesting $2.2 million to make sewer infrastructure capacity improvements that will allow the town to use previously authorized town funds for other sewer capacity related improvements. So basically freeing of funding that the town has already voted to approve to make necessary improvements, free that funding up to do something else. And this would entirely pay for a recent sewer project at Cedar Point, damage I'd received approval at town meeting.
Right, can you explain that? So the grant is to release money that we already have approved?
Yeah, so the town authorized at the previous town meeting, two point, an amount of $2.2 million to pay for these sewer improvements at Cedar Point. We are leveraging the Drew Company Development because it meets so many objectives of that grant program, the economic development, housing, affordable housing, et cetera. They want to see developments like these in these locations and they're willing to make investments in communities in their infrastructure. So, and another advantage for a program like this is to have a project that's shovel ready. So Cedar Point has been approved, has the funding in place, it's been out for design, engineering, and it's ready to go out to bid. So that's about as shovel ready as you can get. So what we applied for was funding to cover that project and then we could use, you know, that authorization to do whatever you folks in the town wishes to do to make other improvements on top of this project.
So the grant is to pay for the project that we already have?
Yes. Yes, so it would alleviate that burden on the taxpayer and those funds could be used for something else.
Right, and then we would have to get another project to, to go before the town before something, for something else.
Yes. So, so that, you know, the Cedar Point project creates or eliminates approximately 40,000 gallons a day of inflow and infiltration. In addition to, again, we need projects like this to leverage to the state to get the grant. They don't provide these grants without kind of them getting something out of this as well. But in addition to, you know, their assistance in hopefully getting this grant for the town, we, again, we've been in negotiating, discussions with them to get approximately $400,000 to contribute to, let's say, more traditional III work that we're already doing in town. So manhole rehabilitation and lateral service, either repair or replacement. So again, that additional that they're providing is actually carving out their capacity. So not only are we doing this grant project that is basically removing 40,000 gallons of II from the system per day, they are doing additional improvements that carve out the capacity that they need on top of that.
Joe, can I just ask?
Yeah.
Well, how are we guaranteeing 40,000 gallons saved?
That's the Cedar Point project.
But just give me a quick, how is, what is that going to do?
So that's the, the forced main removal of the existing clay grabbing lines in the Cedar Point neighborhood.
So we think that by replacing those lines, we're going to have $40,000, 40,000 gallons a day less leakage?
Yes, so the CDM, the II report that we have from 2017 documents based upon the various sewer needs areas or contribution areas, what the contribution of II is from each of those areas. And the, the Cedar Point area has 40,000 gallons per day, so if you kind of remediate that area, you'll, you'll have those savings in terms of gallons per day.
Totally. And we had that discussion, Kevin, Kevin put flow meters out there, if I'm speaking, let me know. The flow meter is out from the point, the minimum of I with, there's very little activity about any, and that's what.
The taxes.
Hard enough, and that's, they can, I think that's your point.
Yeah, so there's, there's the high tide that we're just sucking in every day. And then this, that report also goes through kind of event contributions, so that's your range, flooding, your.
Great.
Yep. So again, the, and then the additional work above and beyond, so I didn't say at the beginning, but their projected development, 78 housing units in the commercial space, it's projected to contribute about 15,000 gallons per day to the system. So considering this grant option, again, we'd be seeking funding for that 40,000 gallon per day project, but they'd also be contributing funding to take out an additional 18,000 gallons per day. So the air contribution, 15,000 gallons per day plus a factor of 20%.
Kevin has a question?
Yes.
Well, you just answered half the question. The other question, remind me what we think the capacity for the whole build out at Seaside is?
The air contribution?
Yeah.
Well, roughly 40,000, I think, per day.
Yeah, that was how, that was 20. To, to the Drew project?
No, 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 it's the Seaside. If they're 15, I just want to know what the number was.
Yeah, 12, I think was 152 units, so I think it was closer to 40,000, a little under 40,000, I think, per day. So again, this is, I think, if we could get the grant, if we could, you know, do this additional II on top of it, I think we're taking out, you know, almost three or four times what this project would be contributing, so, you know, clearly see that as kind of a win-win for folks. The second track, if we are not.
Last one question on the first track.
Yes.
Is it your opinion that we wouldn't be able to get this grant without that project?
Definitely not. We have to, they have certain kind of program objectives that they're trying to do with the Mass Works grant. And they, through that program, they are trying to, again, encourage economic development, job creation, housing. So to get that, they facilitate improvements.
So they, the project's argument, we're saying, we're doing this.
Yeah.
Great.
And what is the timeline on the grant, the notification? When do you think they would rule on that?
They're fast, so we submitted in August and I'd expect we'd know in October.
All right, any other questions on those?
So then moving on to the non-grant option, again, this is kind of Plan B, so if we are unable to secure the Mass Works grant, Drew Company would still commit to do the II, I guess the traditional II, so taking out the 18,000 gallons per day out of the system through manhole rehabilitation and lateral improvements. Under this scenario, we understand, we obviously see that they'd have to do more, so we're continuing to work with them on an appropriate amount of funding to go above and beyond that to do, again, additional II work or other things that the DPW can direct us to that would be helpful in capacity of the system. So that's, that's kind of my quick update. I don't know if you folks want to hear a few more questions about that particular option. Questions?
No, there's just been a tremendous amount of work to get that application done. I just wanted to, you know, commend Brad and the team currently to getting it in, getting it on the box, just, it is a pile of work to try to apply for the grant.
I mean, my only comment, and I sort of turned it down today, is, you know, we've put millions and millions into II, we haven't really been guaranteed any improvement. That's why I love the fact that the Cedar Point had somewhat guaranteed improvement. I don't, I don't know that replacing manhole covers and this other stuff that we're thinking about are actually, going to actually turn anything. So I'm wondering if, if the grant doesn't come through, if somehow we get money, whatever money we get, we put towards that budget anyway where it's guaranteed a return.
We could do that or we could put it towards, there's actually, there's future phases of Cedar Point type projects, so future forced main expansions that are needed in those other high needs areas like Oceanside. You could certainly, you know, invest in that next phase. So again, looking at that report, there's Cedar Point and then Oceanside's broken up into a few phases, so you could, you know, fast track one of the other phases if that made more sense. To get the estimates for the expected II removal for the manhole covers and the laterals, you know, they, they refer to DEP. you know, they refer to DEP and EPA guidance for expected kind of gallons per day you take out when you make these improvements, and I believe they actually cut that expected amount down by a certain percentage just to kind of be more realistic, because I think the numbers you get from EPA and DEP are probably conservative, but just to be even more conservative, I think we're taking it a little better.
Just one other thing, so on the laterals, as Brad said earlier, we know what type of IONI we get from those pipes. The Drew Company sent a camera into the main pipe, and there's really very little wear and tear or damage in the main pipe, so that tells us the leakage is coming from the laterals, either where they're connected to the pipe or somewhere going into the house. So we're pretty confident that that will have an IONI reduction, and the manhole covers, that will help, just in stormy land, so if we have a lot of storms, it's keeping a lot of, we know a lot of storms, it's not keeping quite as much out, and we accounted for that when we did the mountain.
Yeah, and where are, where are the laterals, are they in the same area?
Yep.
You correct me, you guys did that, so your company had a company come up with that?
And I forgot to mention that, so they went out, because they were actually, you know, basically looking for projects that they could do to eliminate II. So they went out and camered the lines, like Jim mentioned, and a lot of the previous improvements that the town has done are doing what they're supposed to be doing, but there's other kind of pieces in that puzzle that have not been replaced or updated. So a lot of the leakage, you know, kind of, you know, is still surface, coming out of those areas that have not been replaced.
We even put a line in the pipe, the line in the pipe's intact, and we're still getting IONI, which is telling us it's coming from the latter to someplace else.
Well, she's saying, it's interesting, to Tony's point, it's, you know, having a different set of eyes who've always had the same names, you know, same firms out there year after year, to Tony's point, doesn't seem like we're getting any there if the Drew Company used a different engineering, you know, maybe it's time we looked around a few guys, especially if you saw something different than what we thought, but if we're on the same page, then that's good to know. I'm just going to make a comment, or I guess it would be a question we talked to everyone, because it's a 50-50 chance, do you get the grant or...
From my opinion, I think we take off every box when, you know, the word Brad did, because there are pieces of it that are trans-oriented, you know, you get points for that as well, this hits that, I mean, the residential piece, I don't think there was anything missing. We've kind of looked into that to make sure that that's correct, so I, you know, I feel like we have a very good shot, but...
And I think it was a pretty clear state, the MTA, who's trying to get rid of this parcel, trying to surplus the parcel, that this is developer and the development that the town is most pleased with, and if this doesn't go through, they aren't going to be able to sell the property or move on something for a long time, because it took us a long time to get here. If you scrap or kind of help out the development that's, you know, again, most liked, I think appears a lot of this.
The only, I would add, tip of the hat to you, when we were, in front of you, we were talking about the issues we had to deal with on Turgut, and we mentioned the fact that the auction had these pushback, the MTA kind of had to have approved, you know, writing a letter of support. That letter of support actually matters to the state because it shows the fact that the town is supporting the project, and they're for the project, is important to the town. Most projects don't have that kind of support, so, I mean, you've helped, you helped us with that one issue, but also that same letter basically helps.
There's a part of the I. Yeah, that checks off the shovel-ready box because they know the town is not going to throw up regulatory roadblocks to the land project, that's kind of the process.
John, I was just going to kind of ask along that same thought, I think last time you were with us, you had a PNS that was doing a certain date, so they, why, they continue to work with you?
They continue to work with us, but we really do have to close by December. So, and we haven't, the Planning Board was very supportive, but we were, I think correctly sent to talk to you about the sewer issue, to see if we could have a resolution on sewer issue before we go back to the planning board. So, I mean, it's, if we can agree to Option B, in the event that the grant doesn't come through with you, and get your rule on that, we'll go right to the Planning Board and start the process, and hopefully we'll have a great nice Saturday.
All right, well, good. How's the board feel?
I think the two tracks are entirely appropriate for where you are, and, you know, I think it's more than...
I would expect that option B, the L-D, the L-C, or something like that, would have very good means with that, that's what possibly comes up, what we...
It was last week.
You know, Option A is all set, which means you know that Option B, and we're going to get that done fairly certain, so the board will have both options in front of you, can approve them as they sit before you, and then they go forward and move on the project.
There's nothing else they need for Option A, it involves their grant, it's...
It involves the space contract, yeah.
Well, it sounds like you've heard the board supportive of either option, so you're not looking for a vote tonight, it's just a question. So that gives you enough to be able to proceed forward and get to the Planning Board and get through the site plan, I guess, or permit, permitting, I guess.
Yep, site plan review.
Site plan review.
So it isn't as in rights zoning projects, so that'll play a role?
So they don't want a permit, they just need a site plan, but I think that's a gentleman for us, right?
Would we, or would they be able to come to a future meeting soon if the details of Plan B are kind of...
Absolutely, because we have it nailed down, we'll go back to the board.
Absolutely, put it on the very next agenda, so you're not constrained with the, your time.
Thank you.
Gentleman, thank you, appreciate it.
All right, going to move on now to a discussion vote on the grant of Homura Easement, and next discussion item, 850, Jim.
Yeah, so one of the things that happened, based on is the, for the Homura Nourishment project, the grant to the easement, there was some questions about adding some stuff into the actual easement, about maintenance requirements, when we actually record this on the deed. So I worked with Mar, we came up with a new easement, we set up the town council, the town council was not in favor of putting those things in the easement. I sort of believe the easement stood as it was, but the requirements for maintenance and the pledge that we would not record the easements until the town was ready to go forward with the project would be in the cover letter that we would send, that would be a binding agreement that the town would not do these things. So what you have with funding is an easement that's almost identical to what we use on seawalls, but a cover letter that would go with it, that would set out what the town's requirements would be for maintenance, which would be what we have in the grant application, as Brad said, and all that, and that we would not record these deeds until the town had funding, was ready to go forward with the project.
Makes sense. Again, when recorded, it tells the county that it's used and used, otherwise it's useless.
So what we're asking for the board is to approve the letter and the easement. Again, easement, for all intents and purposes, is almost identical to what we use on seawalls.
Yeah, I have an objection, but I prefer you, the easement, in my feeling, is what we've expected from other residents in town, in particular seawalls. That's what they've ended up signing, and I don't see a difference here, even though it's not seawalls, we're dealing with beach nourishment, it's the same thing.
And we have a project in mind that's mostly public, so potentially like a part of it would be private, and if we're going to do that portion, it would have to sign easement proposal.
Yeah. Questions from the board?
I'm just looking at this now, so what is the, what is the nourishment project, what area is the cover?
Brad probably wrote a little bit better, I can put it based on the base of Fourth Cliff, heading back towards Homura proper.
Down to Barrett Street.
So is this for the Air Force area?
No.
No, this is what the actual home is.
This is for Central Ave, and it's in two phases, and...
It's actually at the base of Fourth Cliff, you know, with the road forks, and you head up to the base, and it starts there, where it's pretty rough, and that's what we've always been nervous about.
Back towards Homura.
Comes back towards...
They want to put sand there.
It's, it's almost a cobble, it's not like we think of beach sand, it's more cobble to stay there better.
Isn't John Ramsey coming before the board in September?
Yep.
Yeah, to go over the entire plan as you.
And we want people to make their property accessible to town.
The part that we're going to be putting this new beach on, yes, correct.
So this was updated just for some history, the Coastal Resource Officer Nancy did a presentation to the Homura residents on June 25th, and there were still some concerns that surrounded around maintenance and also not filing the easement until the project starts. So that's why we went back to our town council, who amended what you have before you tonight, and also advised us for the cover letter to address the...
I could see why, I could see why they're concerned, like, it's a town that filed easement without the project going forward, and I'd be upset if that were the case, but it's not. As far as the area of easement, that's the area where the works will be provided.
Well, there's two easements, there's a temporary construction easement and an easement where this actually will be in, with the seawalls, but so this is the same, each house has a different easement, so now we're going to tax the deed, or the courts will show that, temporary construction, and the permanent is without a lot of people to use that portion in front of the beach.
It's the same thing you do with seawalls.
Right, there's no, there's no access from Central Ave over someone's property to that front beach, it's just going to be the actual beach portion itself.
It's the same thing with seawalls.
Any questions from the board?
Just one more, so we're responsible, this now is falling to Brad, because I just want to know where the Coastal Resource Officer's job search is going.
So we, it's been advertised, and we have an interview on Friday, we've had three people applying, starting scheduling, so...
So wait, I'll be on Brad, I have a water thing.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Rich Feely, 286 Central Ave, what is the legal standing of a cover letter? And by that I mean, there's five years now, three years now, somebody goes and records the easement regardless of the project schedule, and then it's recorded, it's done. What does that cover letter do for me? I have to go back and shoot the town, say, you agreed that you weren't going to do this, but you did it, it's now all my deed, I'm into a big fight for my property, that doesn't help for me, it's not going to help for me.
Well, Mr. Feely, I feel for you, but, you know, there comes a point when you are a citizen and you're working with your town, and the town, together collectively, decides that they're going to be paying out of their taxes to help you and your residents, because you're living in a very dangerous area, water and the seas and the storms, you got to have trust. If you don't have trust from the get-go in any relationship, whether it's with the town or friends or family, then that relationship is doomed from the start. And if your position is that, Jace, the town is going to go on its own with your property, or your neighbor's property, or all the people's property, and try to snorkel them and saying, we just took your beach, we did it under, shall we say, to induce you so that we could steal your beach rights. And that's what you're kind of saying here, and yet, we're sending people down there, and, whatever the storms are, our DPW, our police, fire, to help people who are there during these storms, putting them in harm's way, and our whole push here is to try to make it safer by not putting necessarily a wall in, but extending the beach so that that velocity of those waves are absorbed to protect you and your neighbors. You know, it really comes down to trust, and if you don't trust the town, because you got a letter saying they're not going to record it, and you think they're going to do it, we're doomed. And I'll be candid with you, then my feeling on it is if you or other people don't want to sign the easement, you don't have to.
We know that.
It's been demonstrated elsewhere in town where people didn't want to do it on Oceanside, and then we found they don't have a sea wall, they have an old sea wall, it's their sea wall, it's not the town-owned sea wall. So I guess what I'd say to you is, you either trust us because we're trying to work with you and your neighbors to protect you, or you don't, and if you don't, then there's not much I can tell you. Really, that's what it boils down to.
I agree, and unfortunately, this town's made decisions which have left people feeling less trustworthy, that's the problem, that perspective that you guys have put forward.
Well, I'm not sure.
Well, I know, I know that's true.
I don't know what you're referring to. We have done to make anybody feel, shall we say, that we're distrustful, because there's a lot of misinformation out there on certain topics, there's a lot of disinformation out there intentionally put by other people who frankly, for whatever reason, sent it out, I don't know why. But again, I implore you, if your feeling is the same way, like I think it was 12 people on Oceanside who said, one in particular, it was really one person who said, I'm not going to give an easement, it didn't happen, and that's okay. You know, I will say, the town has spent about $100,000 just on this project for the past two years, and at this point, we have $70 million of infrastructure just on foreshore protection and seawall alone that we need to address, and we've chipped away at it for the past five years, so the tune, I think, about $16 million so far. If it doesn't happen, then there are other projects in town that we need to address. So I say to you, because you're going to have this meeting with your neighbors, I implore you, you know, if there's no trust from you, it doesn't really matter about your neighbors, because, you know, we need everybody involved, we need the trust factor.
It's not just me, that's the point you don't get.
Well, it's unfortunate, but if that's the way it is, then you know what, that's the way it is.
Can I add a clarification to the, the cover letter gets filed with the easement at the registry of deeds, correct? Jim?
Yeah, basically, the cover letter is this contract with the town saying we're going to do these things. Whether it's on the cover letter, even if I put it in the easement, there's nothing that says like, if I want to be the priorist and under, go file a deed, yeah, I get the money, file a deed anyway, so, you know, there's nothing in it for the town, like the way I put it, there's nothing in it for the town to file the easements, unless we're doing the project. Why would we do it? It makes no sense, because we're filing an easement for something that doesn't exist. The easement is for what we're going to construct, so filing the easement, the easement for nothing that must be constructed.
The easement for our win, which you tax us heavily on.
The easement is for access to a project that we are going to build, that does not, that does not currently exist, that is what we are asking for the easement.
Yeah, I understand that, but it's still our win. Whether it's 19 feet high or...
We're making improvements to it.
Okay.
And in making those improvements, I'll be using state and federal funds, and I will also need state and federal funds to fix it if it gets washed away. To receive those funds, it must be available to the public, so there has to be an easement for the public to use that.
I have asked for certification, and I have not received that.
Brad had given you what he thought were out regulations, I have a further letter from council that I got today that I'll be happy to share with you, it is out of date, that the federal government requires it, the state government requires it, I know FEMA will not reimburse on a private property, there's a storm, and it's an emergency declaration, the federal government will not give us money to replace that unless it's open to the public. And finally, as Mr. Danny pointed out, the town of Central will be spending significant sums of money to do that project down there, and the town of Central is requiring that it be open to the public. So I got the letter late this afternoon, the board's got it, they'll be happy to send it tomorrow, but we believe that the requirements are there from the state, the state, and the town, that they have the easement open to the public before the town gets this project done.
Any other questions? She had her hand up first, so I'll get to you in a second. Yes.
Please, in case, 2.2 Central Ave, Homura. As far as the beach nourishment, my understanding was originally it was going to be from the bottom of Fourth Cliff to, excuse me, 180 Central Ave, and then it changed to three phases. The first phase is supposed to be now from the bottom of Fourth Cliff to 244 Central. My question is, when the easements are submitted, let's say best-case scenario, all the easements are signed and submitted, when they're actually taken down to the registry to be filed, is it going to be only for the phase that has been funded or for the entire project?
Only for the phase that's been funded.
Okay.
Because it doesn't make any sense to file an easement for something that doesn't exist.
Okay. The other question that is asked is, if the easement is filed, there's no guaranteed date by which it could be nourished. Will there be a timeframe, in other words, let's say, from the point of signing until three years from now, if the town... the town can't get funding with the easements that we return?
Again, we won't file it unless we have the funding.
So, a case in point is, Oceanside, right? It was one of the first seawall replacements that we had done, asking for easements. We went down, I think it was Kevin Cafferty, went down, talked to all the residents, "Will you give us your easement?" And after negotiating, talking, and getting the language that we have for this easement, people said, "Yes, I'll do it." Again, they had the same concern you had. Is the project going forward, or am I going to just be giving up a right, which is my beach rights to the low tide, whatever the beach rights are set in their deed and everything? Because each one can differ. They said, "Yes." It was on contingent that we get the funding for it. And we, in the process, we got the funding, and then we went and recorded, I believe, is how the timing went, and then we did the project. Now, the project, I think, took maybe up to two years between getting it out to bid and everything else, and it's completed. Then we went to another phase, the phase I just referenced, and it failed. Then we went beyond that phase, further on Oceanside, and did another span. And I believe we've actually done four, or, which is actually the third. My point is, is that those residents had some concerns very similar to yours, and we didn't accord it, we didn't take their property unless we were able to complete the project. So, I guess what I'm saying, I can understand your concern, like, are we trying to do something here? No, we're not. What we're trying to do is get a project completed to protect that area of situ. And that's why I say to you, if you don't have the trust from the get-go, then I don't see this happening. I just hope that, you know, people understand we're doing this to protect your property. Now, somebody might think, "Well, gee, now we're looking to create more beaches." Well, if you look at the, I forgot when it was, two years ago, when the consultant came and they showed what the beach re-nourishment is about, it wasn't getting pristine sand, because all that's going to wash out to sea. It's basically trying to find the original material that was here between the cobble, some sand, some stones, and put it back. So, number one, we're not looking to create like a great beach, sandy beach. We're looking to create what was natural there to begin with. Second thing is, even if you're concerned that people now are going to have access to beach property in front of your house, then I have to say to yourself, how do people get there? I mean, you've got to have public access. So, we have a parking lot down across Marshfield Bridge there. Marshfield Ave, right?
The town parking lot.
I'm going to go there, and I'm going to walk all the way up to Fourth Cliff? The answer's no. Now, does that mean that, you know, some of maybe other of your neighbors, well, your neighbors have the same issue? They're not going to go and sit in front of your home unless the tie's up on their property. I don't think that's going to happen. So, I think from a practical standpoint, are people literally from Sandhills or anybody, Egypt or Midas going to say, "I'm going to go to Fourth Cliff in front of your home?" No. But that's why I say to you, I'm like, you're going to be the first one that we're doing beach re-nourishment. I think Midas is the other one that we've been looking at to do, and you're actually the first one. I think it's a fascinating project, because the benefit of it all, and I think you guys know the benefit of it all, is that if there's a storm that takes it away, we can actually get 75% reimbursement through FEMA to put it back out there.
Could you repeat that to me again? If there's a storm that washes away, is it guaranteed 75% reimbursement?
From FEMA.
FEMA.
It has to...
It has to be declared.
Right. It has to be declared by most utilities, that it was a federal disaster. But I'm saying if that's the case, then 75% of that's going to be paid by FEMA. We, on the other end, have to pay it. The town has to pay the other one. The town, all of us. I don't live near it down there, and I'm going to have to pay that in my own taxes.
Well, I say that on the mainland of situ too. That works both ways.
So, if that becomes...
That doesn't count.
So, that...
Yes, it does to me. I don't have access to my property, and I'm helping with it.
I don't get water from situ. I'm paying for a water main replacement.
No, you are. You're getting water from Marshall, but we're paying for that. The town is. So, you're getting water just because of the source. Like we said, with the utility source, it's irrelevant. You're getting, we're paying for that. Situ's paying for your water. At a premium, I might add, because we're paying commercial rates, not residential rates.
Can I ask another question, which you brought up? You've compared the seawall to nourishment.
Sure.
And I submit to you, there are two separate items. A seawall should last 40, 50, 60 years. The nourishment's going to last, according to John Ramsey, four, seven, maybe 10 years before it needs to be re-profiled, re-grated. My concern there is, you don't get, you don't make the federal limit and get the money, and then you don't do the work. But you have my easement, but you're not coming back on to fix the problem. There's no sunset clause, and that's a concern. Put me out to the board.
I understand.
Okay? I'm giving away for the rest of my life and in perpetuity, my land.
It's the same with seawalls, though. If the seawall doesn't get declared a federal emergency, you're stuck with that seawall situation.
I'll say it again. Seawall should get. My seawall for my house is 60 years old. 60. You're comparing that to a five-year burn. Not the same elephant. It's not.
You say five years. It's not five years.
That's what I'm going to...
Ramsey...
Tell the elderly a story.
Folks, we're going to ask a question. We're going to give an answer.
Okay.
And interrupt each other, okay?
Go ahead.
So, Ramsey actually gave us, what was it, a presentation. My memory was, it depends, but it's not just five years. It does begin to erode, but I remember it was anywhere between 10 to 20 years potentially for different things.
I can clarify that for you?
I don't need clarification about the thing. You raised an issue that you're concerned about. That's a valid concern.
Well...
But it's a concern that you have to say, do you want beach re-nourishment in front of your house right now, knowing the current situation? And if the answer's no...
No, the answer is yes, to be honest with you, sir. I do. I'm in favor of this project, and I'm just looking for something on the other side of a ledger that if you can't fix it eight years from now, and there's no appetite in the federal budget to do this stuff, and they just grab all, go off the sea, well, at least I've got an easement back, and I'll have that on my record. I'm going to try to sell my remaining property.
You're always going to owe. It's always going to be your property.
The easement makes the worst value. I know I've made the argument, the other side, that protection makes more value. I can make the argument both directions. But my point is, if you can't maintain it, then you don't need an easement.
Well, you know what? We can worry about what the future's going to hold, and if that's how we're going to project ourselves going forward, then there's not much I can tell you about it. I mean, see, the trust, the town's going to try to do the right thing here and protect the property, because the water's rising, we're getting more storms, we're getting a lot more damage along our coastline. And, you know, again, it just comes back to, if the answer's no, I don't want to give an easement, then...
Yes, you're right. There's nobody saying no to that.
Yes.
The point is, I want to give an easement.
My answer to that would be, what we're getting an easement for is what we are constructing. If that gets washed away, there's nothing there.
They can't go up to one foot from your property and put the beach...
The easement's also for the dredging. It's not a one-way easement. That easement is for the dredging of the South River and beach nourishment.
No, it's not. No, it's easements. It only pertains to your property. The only thing I would like to add to that, to your concern about, you know, 10 years from now and you're giving up your property. If we go forward, we get the easements, we get this, and we have, you know, a good chance of getting the federal disaster and reimbursement down the road, for that to change, in my view, is, climate gets so bad, the water's up 20 feet, FEMA walks away from it, which case, the nourishment's not going to do any good anyway. So, your risk of what, your risk is more that you're going to lose your property than somebody going to be able to access anything in front of the seawall. So, I think, when you have to, as John says, you have to make those choices, but the benefits on the very, the various paths that could happen in the future are much less of an impact than not protecting your property with this kind of project. And I know you've thought all those things through, but, you know, if we don't get community support to go forward, and it's on the move, and you guys are going to be sitting there with the next storm without at least a buffer, however long it lasts, that buffer.
I've actually had people say that to me. They're rather willing to see, take their land than to give it to the town, to which I vehemently argue, said, "You argue mine."
There's nothing we're going to do to...
I understand that. I'm just trying to tell the board some of the discussions I've had with my neighbors, and that would one of them.
Well, hopefully, the next round of education will help some of those, but I know the town's worked really hard to put the facts out.
I'm sorry. In fact, we've got a round of questions, and I wanted to get back to that.
Jan Lady, 274 Central Ave.
Yep.
I provided some comments to Nancy Derby, specifically was in the area of where it talks about the permanent easement, and then it says such acts, such shall not be this exercise, and it provided some language in there that was acceptable to us. What changes were made there?
I guess I'm not sure what you provided and what...
Specifically, it says where there exists and what would be acceptable, which wasn't that phrase, was common currently or in the future.
Do you know what version that is? Because there's...
Yeah, this one. I think any of those things went to town council, and then went back a couple of times, back and forth a couple of times.
That might have been suggestive draft language.
Yeah.
And there were different versions of the easement. Nancy had gone out with some suggestive changes, and then they voted on last year. So, I think the current easement is online, and this updated language is what they chose. So, I guess I just really don't know, you know, what...
I provided Nancy's name.
I don't see, I don't see, but, okay.
Do you have the easement from Nancy in January that has changed by substance?
Yeah.
Why?
Sorry. So, I couldn't answer your question, sir, because it's been changed. The version, the final version draft, I don't see what you're referencing. Sorry.
Okay, so how would I get that addressed?
I guess you've got to take a look at the current draft, and if you have any suggestions or any revisions, and you'd have to get that back to us.
Can you get that language from Brad so I can... It'll save you. You can get it to Brad as fast as I can go through Nancy's files looking for it. That's all.
Yeah. I can email him, but I haven't.
I'll look at it.
Are you coming tomorrow night?
Yeah.
Going to be a copy there.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Well, I mean, if you give it, we're going to buy it out. We're going to do the same as I'll give you tonight. I haven't seen it. So, if you get it to me as fast, like, at least take a look at it, saying, "We considered it. For whatever reason, it's not in there, or maybe we can put it in." But if you just do whatever you bought out and say, "Well, I don't know," you'll get back to you. So, if you get it to us to look at it, faster. So, if you have Brad's email or my email, I have your Brad's stuff. You'll just send it over.
Okay.
I'll get it tomorrow night.
I'll get it over.
Okay.
Yes.
So, what I was trying to explain about the two easements. When Nancy originally was talking to people, she said the easement for the, if you sign the easement for the dredging, which would put the dredge material back onto the beach, it would also include the beach nourishment. So, it encompassed the two things. There had been several requests, Nancy, that they be two separate easements, because at that time, the engineering plans had not been completed for the beach nourishment, and people were willing to sign a straight easement for the dredging, because they were told the material was going to go back onto the beach. Then, recently, we, people found out that the dredge material was not going on to the beach, that it really hadn't been researched, and it was going offshore to the mass disposal site. That caused a lot of confusion and concern, because people had thought that material was going to go there, and now all of a sudden, plan changed, but they felt no one had disclosed it, and that kind of made a communication breakdown. I mean, I think it's important to share some of these things, because the person that had done a lot of this and communicated isn't hearing more. Brad's picking up the pieces. You all are trying to figure out what materials are where, but you have residents that were told these things. Some people signed the easement based on the fact that the material would go on the beach, and it didn't, and then they felt that they had been deceived.
Yeah.
I know. So, what the coastal resource officer Nancy had originally tried to do was to kill two birds with one stone, which was two constructive easements that addressed the South River dredging project, which is a separate project, that had a potential of putting about 30,000 cubic feet of sand on the eastern side of Homarock, and also giving access in that same area for this beach re-nourishment project. That was her goal. Now, the projects aren't aligned, because obviously, the beach nourishment is much longer is, you know, put back. The dredge project had, and Brad, you can back me up on here, had 12 samples taken of the different sand material. Over, five of those samples have been deemed incompatible and unsuitable to go back and be protective on the eastern side of the shore. Nancy communicated that on June 25th, that the dredge material that she has been, that she was notified, and you can watch the YouTube video, because it was recorded, she did let folks know that that dredge material was incompatible, and that it was more than likely that that dredge material was not going to be coming to us, that it's going to be going offshore. So, that's where that sat. I don't think it was anybody's intention to mislead anyone. There was no way of knowing that part of that material was going to be deemed incompatible. The hope was that it was going to be compatible, and that we're going to get a double shot here. We're going to get 30,000 cubic feet of sand while we work to get a two-year bigger project of beach re-nourishment done. So, I understand that there was confusion, but she did communicate that on June 25th. And I, that sand is gone. I mean, I know, Brad, you want to speak to the last samples that...
Yes, again, I, it wasn't on the project at the beginning, but from what I can take, I had conversations with both of the consultants, or our consultants that worked on that, and state agency folks. So, again, there were a dozen of 13 samples. At least two of them had clay and other materials that we need to do further chemical analysis on. So, basically, because of what the potentially contaminants or whatever, considering the clay, it's compatible with beach nourishment, so basically, you can do the chemical testing to figure out where you can help it, whether it's mass bay or cave guard disposal sites. Then there were another four or five samples that had too high level of fines, which means that it was not compatible with what the sand that's on Homarock now. So, if you've done something that has too high level of fine sand material, it's just going to wash away. So, then you have much smaller pool of potential sand or sediment that you can use for nourishment. And then, now, since you have so many different samples that are compatible or not compatible, when you do mechanical dredging, which you have to do in South River dredge, you have like three or four stockpiles of material to then get that smaller amount of material that might be compatible to bring to the beach, you're probably paying four times, three or four times the going rate on a beach nourishment project. And at that time, you're only putting 15,000, I don't know the exact number, but even you just say half of that 30,000 onto a beach at three or four times the cost for a beach that needs several hundred thousand cubic yards of material. The cost and benefit may show there very well. So, you shouldn't pay kind of three or four times more than something's worth to get that small of a benefit. So, it is unfortunate. And again, I think before that was known, I believe Nancy, you know, earnestly was just trying to make, to get the easements in guilty parts of North Carolina, like Morris says. I don't think it was deceiving on any part, but that sediment sample analysis came in after, and she was trying to just get folks to sign easement, just in case, just in case we could either get that or, you know, have this easement be utilized for the Homarock project.
And that makes a lot of sense. However, there is one glitch to that, and she did state that the reason that the dredging couldn't go back onto the beach was because people didn't sign the easement, and there was not enough room at the bottom of Fourth Cliff for all the material. She had forecasted approximately 30,000 cubic yards of material from the dredge. However, the dredge then got broken up into three different phases instead of the one. Therefore, now, the 30,000 cubic yards was reduced down to 10,000 cubic yards, and there would be more than enough room at the bottom of Fourth Cliff for that, like with the road that was built in 2015. It wrapped around Fourth Cliff. The reason I'm stating is because with that statement, based on the, I mean, I attended the meeting that Morris referenced, and yes, I heard that, and I understand completely what Brad's saying, because that makes a lot of sense. But again, with that additional conflicting information, it makes people wonder which story it is it. story it is it.
I was just gonna say, any of the meetings that Nancy has spoken, when I've been there, and even with the Air Force with Fourth Cliff, we don't call any of the shots. It was always up to the Army Corps to say where that disposal site was gonna be. I never, I'm not saying she didn't say it, or she did say it, but anytime we and she spoke to me, it was always up to the Army Corps where that was gonna go. And I can remember twenty years ago, there was a company that did a hydraulic dredging project that didn't go very well on the South River, and they tried to do just what Brad said, pump it onto the beach, and it didn't go very well. I think we all hope for it could go on the beach if it was compatible, but that's out of our hands. I never heard of it.
Hopefully, we have any agreement with the Army Corps, that the Air Force can put anything on those beaches instead of our own. And they're also, the Air Force has some money somewhere to do some operate that total life of Brad's, I don't see why it's not, but right now, the timing's just not lining up, actually, as this case put it up. We're doing what's called Area A, which is the actual mouth of the South River, which is, Fourth Cliff is now on the South River, but the bottom of Cliff is Washington. The hazard navigation has to get done. That's gonna get done in the next, hopefully, we have to grant the next dredging period we're allowed, which I think is in the fall. So we don't have a place to put that, we don't have agreements to put it there, so that material's gonna have to go someplace else. But then we have the entire length of the South River from Area A, which again, is the mouth, all the way down to the first bridge, and then Moshua wants to do between the bridges. Different conversation, but right now, the dredging that we're gonna do, we don't have the agreements that we can put it anywhere, we don't have permits to put it anywhere, and it's just gonna have to be, because Brad says it's not compatible anyway, so it's kind of too far. That's the stuff, we get that dredge, it's gonna have to go in that group of...
Well, this is, I intend I have to vote on to approve the draft easement letter sent to the Hummer Rock residents. Any other questions? Oh, I'd say accept the motion.
Can I ask just one last question?
One last question, because I gotta move this three-hour meeting, and we're gonna take a break at ten, because I really don't want, you know, I'm sitting here for three hours, we need to take a break, so. One last question.
I can respect that. Why did the attorney not want the verbiage in the letter to go onto the easement?
It doesn't belong.
To make it separate.
You don't put the like language in something like, you know, this is not to be recorded, this is only to be recorded if the project goes forward, that you don't put that equal language, easement language, it doesn't go on. It just doesn't. That's all. All right, the motion.
Do we want to do anything with the language that this gentleman has that Jim's gonna look at tomorrow?
Well, I think you want to approve the cover letter of the easement, and if we have to grant amendment, we can grant amendment.
You said with the current version.
I don't think it's gonna change. I don't think it's gonna change. I'm looking very clearly. Even needs to be as clean as possible.
I'll make a motion to approve the draft easement and letter from the Hummer Rock residents for the beach nourishment project.
Motion by Ms. Curran. Seconded by Mr. Vignani. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You mean amended?
Right back. All right, great. Thank you, folks, appreciate it. We're gonna move on now to discussion vote of the senior center architect contract.
Just very briefly, the board has already approved the architect for the senior center, probably heavy notch type, just to execute the contract with them. It's the CIAA contract, over in the hour.
Questions for the board? Motion?
I just, I was curious, just because I don't understand, why furniture, furniture and equipment would be, if they're just doing design and development, why the architect would have...
Still show the costs and the design, what the furniture can be. So we got costs, it has to approve furnitures and all that stuff.
No, because this contract is designed originally, it's not requiring of the construction. So it's not gonna cost twenty grand.
Design, it's gonna show pictures and furnishings and all that stuff, that then is taking the... It's not gonna be just an empty building. Empty building, show the furniture, the fixtures, all that stuff, it's all a bunch of...
And the other is, the unknown item is not, if they go in and think that there's gonna be huge abatement, that's outside of the scope of this.
They have to have a separate idea.
Okay, I just wanted everybody to know that that was a wild card out there.
That's always...
So like a baby grand piano? Sorry, board, do you have a question? There's a piano there, actually, recreation ground.
I just have a question in the additional services. It's up in the cover letter, he writes, Jim, that, you know, he's going to explore the different options. So, but then, in the responsibility in the additional services, it says multiple preliminary designs not provided. So I was kind of confused by that, sort of seemed to come in there...
Yeah, I mean, providing options and providing preliminary designs are two different things. I mean, you can do drawing, show it, just a little bit like, but those are preliminary designs.
Okay, so...
Preliminary designs, much...
But we'll at least get a couple, that's my concern, so we just get a couple of renderings of different options, not just, hey, we looked at this, you know, I think the board wants to see...
Right. The only hey, we looked at this would be the question about saving pot or rewind.
Right.
That'd be, hey, we looked at this, and...
Too, yeah.
Way too expensive, but it'll be numerous public meetings, talking about what it's gonna have to look like.
Okay. That was my question.
Any other? No?
Just had it, sorry. Motion to approve Barbara and Andrew and Architec, a contract for architectural services for the senior center.
Motion by Ms. Campfield, seconded by Ms. Curran. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, unanimous. Now we're gonna move over into new business, discussion vote, open the fall special town meeting warrant. That's a quick motion. I'm trying to get to it.
Moved out the board's life and open the warrant for the fall special town meeting to be held on November fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by Mr. Vignani. All in favor?
Aye.
Please care of that, then we've got a discussion vote of one day, are the licenses, it looks like, or is it a malt and wine license, actually?
These are malt wine.
Malt wine. Want to open?
Sure. Movement for us to approve one-day wine and malt licenses to silent chef for an event for the Cituit Maritime Center on August twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen, eleven AM to two PM. Do we have to take these individually? Tailored bartending for an event at the Cituit Harbor Community Building on August twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, from twelve PM to four PM. Silent chef for an event in the Cituit Maritime Center on September eighth, two thousand and eighteen, from twelve-thirty PM to four-thirty PM. Silent chef for an event in the Cituit Maritime Center on September twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen, from five-thirty to nine-thirty PM.
Motion by Ms. Campfield, seconded by Mr. Vignani. All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Next, moving over to liaison reports. Say none. Correspondents?
Can I say something to liaison? Just one minute, just quick.
One minute, you got it.
We could take three minutes just for that. Yeah, exactly.
Now you got fifty-five seconds, let's go.
I would like to share. No, I would like to share that the affordable trust, affordable housing trust has sold its last unit that it owned in town to a deserving family, the Nelson Road, we signed it in PMS last week. So it's excellent news. The only thing that is left remaining is, you know, a piece of land that hopefully a developer, we can negotiate with a developer to build another affordable house. But that's great news, I want to thank the trust, Barbara Cox, and Steve Irish, and everybody, they did a great job.
That is really good, that's...
So, sorry.
Yeah, that's excellent.
But, good news.
Waiting on your other report.
That's liaison report.
Any other liaison reports?
Oh, so... No, I just wanted to let people know, Council on Aging is having an arts and crafts fest fair at forty-four Jericho Road this Saturday, from ten to four. It's a fundraiser to benefit the Council on Aging, and also friends of Cituit senior building project. That's a very cool thing.
Correspondents?
I, this is important. This is really important.
Skip the correspondence to the next meeting, but this one's important.
Cosmos Cafe?
Yes.
Will be reopening on September sixth. That's very important for the town, you know, they're on vacation. There are a number of other letters that I will go through quickly. The United States Environmental Protection Agency has written a letter to inform us that we have been complying with total copper and fluid limits since November thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. That was a program that's been ongoing for a while, but when they close, they have a letter from Kamala, Massachusetts, alcoholic beverages control permission, informing us that Front Street Liquor, doing business at Cituit Package Store, was, had their licenses suspended for a period of four days, two of which will be served in October third and fourth, and two will be held in abeyance for two years if they behave themselves. And then QC has sent a letter informing us that nomination papers are due for the Boston Regional Planning Organization. And, sorry, it's a long letter, with all the details around the file at the selectman's Oh, and this one's important, too. We received a very nice letter from a resident that commended Lorraine Devon in the selectman's office for her exemplary work at straightening out a problem for rental of the Maritime Center for an event, and that was signed by Mary Lou Butler, and thanking for recognizing Lorraine's hard work. We also received a letter from the Toll Brothers thanking all of the departments and committees in Cituit for their professional and accessible work throughout their very long process towards their approval. That's all for our first reports.
Next, we have, is it, I think it's to approve the board's seven minutes?
Move to accept the minutes of the board's selectman meeting on July twenty-fourth and August thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by Mr. Vignani. All in favor?
Aye.
Please care of that. And, I think, is that it? That's it?
I think we also have to approve the minutes for the water meeting.
That is the August thirteenth.
No, that was the thirteenth, yeah.
Other than that, any other business anybody wants to share?
No, Mr. Chair.
No? All right, I do have two things, quick up. Don't forget, September first, the Parade of the Horribles, down in Hummer Rock. It's a Saturday from one to three, and, you know, this is a great time of year, wrapping up the official vacation of summer, and for anybody, if you haven't, it's a fun local tradition down in Hummer Rock, where people put floats in, it's a parade they do, and it's called the Horribles, because I think they generally, you never know what you get when you go there. And it's a great community event, so I highly recommend, if you haven't gone, enjoy it, go down and see it on Saturday. If you miss Saturday's parade, and I'm not sure which camera we're looking at here, but if you miss Saturday's parade, this one? That one? Then on Sunday, down in Sand Hills, there is the Cituit Beach Association's parade from twelve, I think it kicks off at one. Go down to twelve to three, and again, it's actually the oldest parade in Cituit, nineteen, I said nineteen, I think eighteen, is when they first started doing it. And again, another community-based parade where you can go, people put floats together, they decorate it, they march, there's a parade, some bands, just a great way of wrapping up summer and... So highly recommended, if you, Jim, bring your kids, from South Cituit, bring them on over, and it's a good take.
I saw the movie, it, I need to be on my way.
Aside from that, just don't forget, we are having our meeting on September fourth. We will be addressing some water actions, you know, plant, plant of actions that we're discussing. Other than that, entertain a motion to, Ms. Curran, assigned to act. Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Curran. All those in favor?
Aye.